Okay, good evening, everybody. Let's get started with tonight's council work session. Today is May 11th. We have three hours of material scheduled on the agenda. I'm going to do everything we can to manage it within that time. All our council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Milligan. I didn't hear from her, so I do expect her to arrive. Does anybody have any contact with Nina? Okay. She wa-- okay, all right. So she was at least on email today. Okay, so the first item for tonight's agenda is, the first hour is comprehensive plan update. And so I spoke with staff late last week and we kind of conferred on how we're going to handle this today. There's going to be an introduction. Not that we need an introduction, but it's, it kind of helps to kind of, everybody has busy lives and let's just do some context setting for what we're doing. And Trish has prepared a 40-slide presentation which she said she's going to go through in 15 minutes.
More or less.
So that'll be, that should be fun. But then we're going to go through, so all of our committees have seen some section, but not all sections have gone through in a lot of detail. I understand Land and Shore last week didn't get through all that was on the docket and has another meeting. And look how the happy faces from Land and Shore that they get to go through that again. And then, but still after this, all, and I think this is on the schedule, we're going to go over this. All our committees are going to get another chance to look at this. So, but there's one section which is the introduction that we're going to go through, just like you've been, we've been going through the other sections within the committee. So this, so that's the one section that's not going back to any other committees. And so as the, kind of the calendar looks today, tonight's meeting with the follow-on committee meetings and then off, and then another, the early June Land and Shore committee meeting is when we expect to have all changes and updates finalized, at least from staff, for presentation to Land and Shore. And possibly that'll be our last committee meeting. Maybe there will be a referral to the entire packet for action on June 15th. At least that's the plan that we're working to. And then at the conclusion of this first part two, will really be our opportunity to, if there's real, we can talk about the various sections, which is fine, but we're especially interested in any really big items that might be missing or you think need to be changed. And again, it's, ideally this would be the evening to get them out rather than sometime later at one of the committee meetings. We just need the time to handle them. So, since we're going to have the chance in committee to go over items in more detail, if time allows, we'll go into some details if it seems to make sense, but if not, then we're really going to try to restrict that last portion of this first hour to any big items. So, so if there aren't any questions with that, I'm going to get started by handing it over to Charlie initially, he's going to do the introduction, and then off to Trish.
Incredibly brief introduction. Thank you, Council President Winterstein. So tonight we will give an update and overview, as was mentioned. Trish will provide her slide deck. Then we want to cover the introductory section, the introduction, in some detail because that's one section that was not assigned to a council committee. So we want to take a little bit of time to go through that and then get into the identification of any of those big issues that may be of concern at council at this juncture, and then any other comments, questions that are time permitting that we have this evening with the time remaining. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Trish to jump right in and get us going.
Thank you. And as I was telling Paul, one of the reasons that there were so many slides was since you wanted it early, we wanted to be sure that you would be able to understand the slideshow without having somebody helping you through it, so that's why there were some additional slides. Just to preface, as Paul mentioned, some context. What is the Growth Management Act? It was passed in 1990 and that's when all jurisdictions in the state had to start thinking about regional coordination and how to figure out the growth in their areas and how to provide for areas within the urban growth area, which was a big issue back in the late 80s. So this came out of 1990 and that's when we started this whole growth management excitement. There are some requirements that the state asked us to provide for. 14 are listed here. You know them all. Concentrated urban growth, there's regional transportation, economic development, open space. One interesting one we talked about a lot at land use were the natural resource industries like mineral resources, forestry, agricultural land, property rights, shoreline management. These are all part of the, of the big package that is the state GMA. We have updates set by the state. They haven't actually been regularly scheduled, so since 1995 we've had, this is our third one. So they're not on a five-year, seven-year, 12-year program. They're, they're sort of whenever the state decides that it's timely. However, as a city, we do have routine updates. We annually update population and the housing with the numbers that we get from the state OFM. We also change our zoning map and our redesignate for the zoning, for redesignations of city-owned property that we've purchased for open space or other community facilities. Whenever the state and county update their growth targets, we update that as well. And we also update our level of service every year with the new budget and the new population figures to help you all figure out how best to keep meeting that level of service with police, fire, transportation, parks, those pieces. So that helps you every year. And also the Transportation Improvement Program goes in every year. Interestingly, this is all the element, these are all the elements of the comp plan and some of them, as you can see, haven't been amended since we first adopted them. Some we do most every year, but for example, cultural, human services, housing, haven't been done in a very long time. So you'll notice in the, in the track changes version that there are a lot of changes to those, just even updating information that's, that's very old. So we wanted you to realize that not all elements have been updated equally. The new format of this year, we're trying to make them more user-friendly and more focused on goals and policies and not the implementation piece because that seems to confuse people to have the implementation right into the goals and policies. They have trouble separating them. So we're going now with the introduction, the vision, a short vision, what we're required to provide according to the state, and then the topic, the goal, and the discussion so that there's more teeth into it. And then the implementation document we're going to produce next year, and that will be, as Tola so well, he's just said it so well in Land and Shore, like the central plan had that flowing document of implementation, like the parks and impact fee update and concurrency update that were, the implementation of the central plan. We're going to have that same kind of a document for the comprehensive plan. So you see how we're going to implement this plan. The basics, goal, the aim or desired result, you guys know that. Policy is how you get there. The implementation, as we said, we're going to do that, we're going to have that wrapped up next year, is how do you carry it out? It's the code, it's the program, it's the, it's the actual, you know, rubber hits the road kind of piece. For example, if you're going to turn your yard into a garden this next spring, you have to first figure out, do I want flowers or vegetables or do I want to balance? Do I want them locally grown or can I go, you know, exotic? And once you figure out the policies to get your garden, then you start finding a place to buy the plants and vegetables, finding a place to make sure that, you know, that they're pest resistant or whatever. So this is sort of a real-world example of how we're trying to build a comprehensive plan and the implementation to be user-friendly, understandable. We've had a lot of public review of the elements that you see before you. Economic Vitality Commission, the Park Board, Human Services Commission, and Arts Commission all took part in their elements, the elements that affect them, as well as planning policy saw every element at least twice. The rezone and redesignations, we had over 1,000 letters that we were, that were sent to the property owners near those areas, so they were involved as well. Document-wide, again, we didn't, we took out the implementation and just left the goals and the policy. Anything that was like a discussion or existing condition, we actually put that into a goal or a policy so that it would help you have teeth in the work that you do to refer to it when you do have a program or a plan or a project that you want to build so that they have more teeth in the, for have you implement the pieces. The walk and roll went in, the updated concurrency and park fees went in, and also anything that was, could, was central Issaquah that could go citywide, we incorporated that as well. For example, some of the sustainability pieces and the technology pieces. Vision 2040 comparison was a requirement this year from PSRC and that's in the introduction. You'll get to look at that tonight. Paul found a really good piece that didn't make a lot of sense and thankfully, that was actually a quote from PSRC's that we, we can't change the wording on that, but we were glad that you picked their wording that didn't make a lot of sense versus our wording that didn't make a lot of sense. That made us feel pretty good. But we'll be looking at this a little bit later. To start with the land use element, before I tell you the changes, what does the land use element do? It's sort of the, the heart and soul of the whole comp plan. It establishes that pattern of development but makes sure that there's also environmental and economic and social issues that are met. The goals range from all the natural environment ones that you would hope to see, tree canopy, critical areas, stormwater, wetlands, touches on climate change, sustainability, a couple of them on development patterns, healthy communities, which is a new goal that was required this year. Since we're now an urban center for the central Issaquah core, we had to add that one and talk about how we're going to maintain our center. Talk about resource lands, that it's a requirement of GMA, mineral agriculture and forestry, and we, of course, regional coordination and annexation policies. We, we updated those as well. Changes to land use, we updated the targets, we updated the goal, the housing and job goals from the central Issaquah. We expanded the goal for the natural resources to now we have, I think, four, you know, tree canopy, climate change, stormwater. So that one has a lot more teeth than it does in the existing plan. The existing conditions, I mentioned that already, that we turned them into policies. And that there were two requested changes from PSRC that were in your packet to talk about the zone capacity versus the land capacity from the buildable lands, and also to clarify the jobs housing targets versus the goals. We talked a lot about that at Land and Shore, so we're working on trying to clarify that because it is a little confusing. Housing element, what does it do? It works on, it talks about the neighborhoods and that we want to diverse, kind, diverse neighborhoods for all sorts of folks. We want it to be, you know, safe and affordable and we want to provide for special needs, all sorts of good goals for this one. And again, this one hadn't been updated in a while. We had a lot of help from ARCH to rewrite this. They were very involved, as well as the Human Services Commission looked at this several months to, to make sure that it met what they hoped to have for the housing element. Changes, again, a lot of it was just old information. We're also creating a housing strategy implementation along with the other elements, but that will help us understand all the steps that we need to do to implement this, this chap, this element. There's more pedestrian friendliness and walkability from the central plan that's put into this. And also, again, the housing targets and the job housing balance is important in this one as well. Transportation element, I know is one of your favorites. You spent a lot of time working on this last year and all that good work went into this element as well. There's the, sort of a two-pronged vision statement there and also many, many, many goals that you worked through a lot in your concurrency work, from land use environment to regional coordination to transit to streets and everything is just packed into the, the walk and roll, as I mentioned, is in here, as well as the TIP will be in here. Changes, again, from your concurrency work, the PSRC asked for several things that are on the next page. We had to do levels of service and we, we put the light rail in there from all the work that our mayor's been doing, and also the Mobility Master Plan is the policy on that. PSRC had four changes that are in your, again, in your packet, how we're going to address those. And we'll, we can talk about those a little later, but they were good, they were good additions. Utilities, the vision is fourfold because there's so many utilities that we deal with. These were updated mainly because we've updated the sewer plan and the water plan since the last time this was updated. Also, Cary Rittlindin, the, the new permit is in here, so we had a lot of help with that. Again, the, the goals go from all the different utilities that we provide, as well as the private utilities, and essential public facilities, and then the information technology is also in this element. So this is a real wide-ranging element, but not a lot of changes to it, other than the factual kinds of changes that were done through the sewer plan update and the water plan update and the new technology policy that we sort of brought over from the central plan. Parks and Rec, the good news about Parks and Rec, it's always good news for them, for us, is that they're doing, they're in the middle of their big update that they need to do for grants, so it always coincides really well with our element update. And they do a lot of outreach, they're doing some amazing work. The vision is a great vision. Everybody wants more parks and more walkways and they've done the survey, we're doing really well with all this. The goals, they did a lot of the rewriting to just have three goals. They wanted to make it a lot simpler to understand. Parks for today and future generation, how do you balance the needs with the park system? I know you guys do that all the time when you're working on project, new projects for parks. And then how do we have local partnerships to help us have more facilities and work within the region? The changes we added, a new policy on the green necklace, they updated their best management practices and they added a funding sources policy, which is also something we added in Human Services element, and an update of the inventory, of course, because this is their big update, is coming up to you, I think by the end of the year, the, the big park plan will be coming to you. Economic vitality, nice big vision. This one had a total overhaul because you have a new department and you have a new commission that are focused on economic vitality. So a lot of new work has been done and that went right into the element. The goals, there's just the four big ones that make a lot of sense. They, they pull together a lot of the ideas that were in the existing element, but it's a lot more streamlined, it's, it's easy to focus on. So the changes, it seems like there's a lot of changes, but it's really just because of the new information. The cultural business district information was pulled out because we have a feeling we're going to be working on the Old Town Subarea next year based on the work that's going on right now with the subcommittee. So those are gone. We also removed the policies about infill and redevelopment because those are in the land use and the housing elements and it seemed like there was just too much different kinds of discussions going on, so we, we tried to focus to be more user-friendly. Same with sustainability, that went in, that's also in the land use and in, I think, Human Services has something about that. The cultural element got a pretty, pretty good rewrite through the Arts Commission. They made it a lot simpler and more clear-cut. They talked about our cultural vitality, our historic resources, how important art is, how important cultural education is, and local artists. They did a super-good rewrite and PPC was real happy with this one. Again, the changes were mostly because it was completely rewritten and updated. They did add one in to enforce the architectural design standards and the CBD that, they're already on the books, but they just wanted them mentioned in the comprehensive plan to give that umbrella added oomph to them. They also added a policies regarding historic preservation was another one that had a lot of discussion. Human services, of all the changes, this one had the most additions to it. And again, it was Human Services Commission, that's a new one since this was invented, this element was created, had a lot of really good changes. They added a lot of the pieces that you all talked about in your emergence, emerging issues a few months ago. They had already talked about many of them and wanted to have them addressed in this element. And so they're, they're a super-commission. Some of them were the aging in place, diverse population and language barriers, utility assistance, and how do we provide services regionally instead of just trying to have the city help to more do regional, you know, to have more partners to help with, with the issues that we face. These are all the new goals and policies that were added. And again, we'll be talking about this tonight in more detail in services. If, if you all have questions or comments, we'll be happy to take them up then. But a lot of them, as I said, were pieces and parts that you all talked about in the emergent issues a few months ago. Capital facilities is very similar to what you've seen before. The only thing is we updated, of course, population and the funding, the newest budget, and we updated parks because of the new information for the impact fees. Everything else is pretty much the same, but this takes, this covers, you know, if we have deficiencies, how do we pay for them? What are capital improvement projects? How do we make sure that we're sustainable, the way we put money into the different capital facilities? And again, these are the changes. We continue, question that came up in Land and Shore, we continue to figure out the fire level of service as if we had our own fire department. That was a policy that the council back then, when we joined EFER, always wanted to know what would happen if the marriage didn't work out. You know, what, what would it take to go solo again? And so we've always done it that way, both ways. We've done it, what would it take to stay with EFER, but what would it take if we had to go alone? So that's why there's sort of a, a different discussion in the fire. So I wanted to remind you of that, that that's why it looks like we're at a deficit in the fire LOS, but really it's only if we decided to go alone. Redesignation rezones, we did an inventory of city-owned properties that Land and Shore looked at last year. There were 31 parcels that were incorrectly zoned. Again, these are city-owned or right-of-way parcels and they had, they either had, well, we have a whole list of them for you, but they were, they were zoned either multifamily or a single family and they really were open space or a facility or they had a sewer line under it or utility. And so those 31 have all been proposed to be correctly zoned, some kind of community facility zone. And at Land and Shore asked to have the list at their next meeting to actually see why did all of them change? And so we're going to provide that in the next packet. No uses were changing. Want to say that again, no uses were changing, only the zoning designation. We had a lot of people come to the public hearing that were afraid we were going to build something on it or something, but no uses were changing, just the zoning category. And this is a quick map of the 31. They're all over. And as far as private property, there were only two proposed rezones. One was Emmerich. I'm going to quick go to the slide where it's located, off of SR 900 where the Fuchsia Farm used to be. They're asking to be an approved expansion area in the Talis Development Agreement. They're currently in the Talis Development Agreement right now as a potential expansion area, and they had to meet five criteria in order to, to roll into the master, the development agreement. And right now we're doing four and five. We're, they're processing this comp plan amendment and rezone. They've met the first three. The second private property rezone is at Crosston Lane, just down the street, not even half an acre. Used to be owned by the city, we had no plans for it and we sold it to the adjacent land over to be part, landowner to be part of the plat. It's a single-family plat. The rest of the work sessions tonight and then next, tomorrow night, we have services. Then, actually, there's no asterisk there anymore for May 19th because we did get the room and we'll have the, the next Land and Shore, May 19th. And then that Thursday, we have, we're back to infrastructure. June 4th, we're back to Land and Shore, perhaps for a recommendation, and then possible council action on the 15th. And again, anything can happen if you want, if you need or want new meetings, additional meetings. That's what happened at Land and Shore last week and that's where the May 19th meeting came from. So we're open to, as long as it takes, we're here. And then tonight, we're going to do the introduction section review and then, as, as Paul mentioned, any of those big, big issues that you want to talk about. I'll turn it back over to Paul. Is that all right?
Thank you, Trish.
And should I get the introduction up here?
So that definitely was a whirlwind tour.
Did I go too fast? Do you want me up here?
So let me just say before we get started, so now we can kind of switch gears. It's like we're in committee. And I certainly have some questions and comments about this introduction section, so we're going to go through this one. And this is the staff's first opportunity to get direct feedback and, and from us, so this is our opportunity.
You can scroll to anywhere you would like to go. Let us know if you've read through it, have comments.
First of all, Jennifer?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And so you're going to, you're going to man the computer, you're going to scroll up and down and go to various sections. And do you have any kind of opening comments or any, anything to say to us before we get started? No? Okay. So Mary Lou, were you ready?
Yeah, I had a question under public participation. So it's on the first page of the introduction and under the bold sentence, "public participation continues through the annual amendment cycle." And it was the second bullet point there, "improve the involvement of traditionally underrepresented audiences." And I just, I wasn't sure if those had been identified before and if we had identified them, how we track whether or not we're doing better at it.
Part of it was taking it to the Human Services, I don't know if I'm on, sorry. Was taking it to the Human Services Commission for so many times, knowing that they're sort of focused on, on the categories that would be in there. We didn't actually identify per se and reach out per se, other than different groups would come to Human Services to, to talk to us. That was sort of the theater that we used.
So it was more the approach with all of the different commissions? That's, that's the kind of, the new cases going out to them and going out so often?
Right.
I have a couple of questions. There, on page, on page three, actually, there's a list that starts on page IV before.
Sorry.
The list starts there, right there, somewhere there. These goals are not prioritized as, as all need to be weighted balances as the community continues to grow. So that list continues to, onto the next page. And I'm a little bit confused, Trish. There is an item on there called Revitalize the CBD. And yet, it's out because it's going to come back in or something like that. You made a reference to this.
Right. These goals were part of the, before we adopted in 95, these came out of the public involvement that we had way back in the 90s. These were the list that, of, of what the comp plan had to do for us as a community. So we've always left those in, in the introduction to remember sort of where we are and every time we amend or change, we go back and see how close are we coming to them. And some of them were doing better than others. The Revitalize the CBD, we know that we're always working on that, we're always trying to make sure that that still stays current and vital. And so if we do change the subarea plan, if we do change any of the design guidelines or whatever for that, it will always come back to, that's always been a sort of one of those pivotal goals for us as a city, is to make sure the CBD stays vital and, and to say, these actually don't have a lot of teeth per se regulator, regulatorily. But we want to, we always leave them in the introduction so we remember as a community and we all came together to, to do the GMA requirements. This is where we started. Does that help at all?
Yeah, it explains why it's, why it's there, but I'd be, but just the fact that we're going some, through some acrobatics with the CBD right now, that, I mean, it's kind of, you know, it, this is, I found it a little bit of a distraction because it really doesn't characterize anything that's happened. So there's no, really no summary or status or, or mention where else it's covered within the comprehensive plan. Actually, none of these have links to anything else.
Right.
So they're just kind of hanging out there and it's great to have a historical record of the first list of priorities, but it's very difficult to, I think, attach this to the greater plan or the plan that it is today.
Okay.
That's just a general comment about the organization. It's not so much about the content here, you know, what's in this list, I recognize what it is, but it's, it was unclear to me how useful it was or what its intent beyond just a list that was our original beginning, because you couldn't then follow any of these threads.
Okay.
And there was really no comments on them as well. There's another one in the list, there's a couple of them. So the, the one right below that says, "maintain the forested hillsides." Okay, well, that's an interesting topic. You can look at it, depends on what altitude you want to look at and which hillside you want to look at. You can say we're doing great at others. You know, maybe someone could look at some of the planned communities and say, "Well, we, we didn't preserve that." So I wasn't really sure, as a policymaker and some, and we're going to be worried about implementation and strategies, you know, going forward. Again, how, how such a list and how such an item, you know, how we should be using it and considering that. So it's, I, I don't have a specific comment, other than I just found this list in here. Okay, that's good and we can, but I'm not sure how actionable or what call to action, unless my fellow council members on there. unless my fellow council members on there have, have comments themselves. And then the one below that is, or two below that, says, "Preserve Isiqua treasures." Are they still there somewhere, the lists?
Yes, they're still as part of the comprehensive plan, but we have lost several of them, just because they were on private land, and private land gets to be developed when public.
Right. And, and is there any kind of assume, again, so, so what about these public treasures? And what do they mean to us today? And what type of update? Not, not that I'm saying, you know, we should do this, but I think I remember one of them being like this pedestrian bridge over a creek, at the eastern end of Gilman Boulevard, right? And, okay, that's interesting, you know? And what if this or a future council really thought, oh, you know, for transportation circulation, boy, actually having something through there would really make a difference? I'm not saying I want to do that, I'm just saying, how was it expected that such an item should be considered, and therefore, what's its purpose, the way we're continuing to carry them forward?
Right. And the treasures were adopted by resolution, and you all, you all that were sitting here back then, chose to pick the first 35 of the bigger list, because I think Harvey Manning was 37, number 37, and you weren't sure exactly how to protect Harvey Manning, bless his heart. And so the council at that time stopped at 35 and said, "There's no regulation that can preserve, let's say, the mist on the mountains, but we want to keep this, again, as a record of what was important to us when we started down the GMA path." And so I've always thought it would be neat to do an update of the treasures, because I'm sure after 20 years, there's probably new treasures. And again, some have fallen away through development, but to keep that, almost like the indicators, show us how we're doing. Are we, are we adding treasures? Are there treasures that, you know, maybe still not to be regulatory, but to just identify them as community pieces that, that people can gather around and understand that that's what makes us special and unique? We have never updated them from, I think 9093 was when we did the treasures.
Whenever you're done, I just want to get.
Go ahead, I have some more, but you want to pick up on this one?
Yeah, I do on this particular. Thanks, Paul, for jumping to this. This is one of my big topics. I liked the list, because I was, because protect natural environment was on the top, even though it says, "Don't prioritize." It really does matter what you put on the top of the list, and I thought that was awesome. And this list has been important to me in organizing our thoughts and to set a standard. The document, maybe it could be cleaned up a little bit to correspond better with the elements that we use to describe these things more fully, and they are inconsistent. For instance, you picked one of my favorites, "Preserve the Isiqua treasures." It says here to preserve them, which is very strong language, but when you go out into the comp plan, it says, "Well, maybe balance the Isiqua treasures with something else." You know, it doesn't really say, darn, we, they're really, really important to us, and we want to preserve them, so they're, I think the continuity is lacking. Say, and maintain forested hillsides. In the old comp plan, we had stronger language, and this one, it seemed to me, and it's one of the things that we're talking about in Land and Shore, that we might be losing some of the things that help us fulfill this, what are we calling this? Are these called goals?
Yeah.
Concerns from the community. So I liked this list. I hoped that it would provide a better touchstone for the things that are important, and that we could look through the comp plan and see if they really are enforceable in the comp plan. And so I've been using them as a tool that way. I just, and in closing, I just want to say that because it says, "Maintain forested hillsides," and we haven't been able to, that's not an indicator that this is no longer a concern and no longer important. It just means that there's something lacking somewhere else that's not helping us to uphold this. That's the way that I read that. So, I don't know, I like this discussion. This is one that thinks it was important to me.
Any other comments about that section? So I don't have a, a real specific request of you, other than, they just kind of stand out as not linked, not integrated, and without commentary.
Okay. So we can link commentary and.
Well, you know, I, think about it, maybe we can discuss it a little bit more. I don't want to just make work for the purposes of getting through this, but, I don't, maybe you and I can take it offline, talk about it a little bit more. I had some other comments, too. So there's a, the, so there's an entire, there's a large section here on public participation.
That's required by the state.
Right, right. So, so there's a lot of detail in here. And is that level of detail required, or, or, so let me tell you where I'm coming from. And Autumn, you know, I'm talking to you as much as anything. You know, I thought, you know, here in 2015, there are certain methods that we use for interacting, you know, with our constituents. And, you know, in 2016, there may be some great new invention. And just to make, you know, make that up, and, and, you know, I don't think that would, because it's not in here, we would be prevented, you know, from doing that. But it would seem to me that a communications plan is, is really a living and breathing thing. The strategies that you use to reach out, to engage the public is, is evolving, and you have opportunities to, the tools and the methods, and how we prioritize and fund it, you know, can actually change from year to year. And so as I, as I read this, I thought it was so specific in some of its techniques, that why? Why are we that specific? I mean, I mean, kind of a, it's almost, we talked, you talked about, we're going to go on to this implementation phase, and I don't know what that's going to look like, but I know the housing element specifically says housing strategy. So I think that maybe that's what you were referring to about one of those. And it's, and it's just, this kind of stood out to me as a lot of detail for the comp plan, when it's supposed to, when, when, I don't know that it's really the kind of detail you want in a comp plan. And it may be outdated really soon. And so, so that was the reaction I had, you know, when I, when I read all of this. And we're going to invent, and you're going to discover, and we're going to say, "That's a great new technique." We may even talk more about it as a goal later on. And so that was my general reaction, if the spirit, my wondering is if the spirit of what's required can be met without being so specific. But there are, there truly are goals that we want to achieve with this interaction. But to mention specific channels on how to do that, kind of, it has a lot more detail than we were in other places.
Right. And again, because it was required by the state, and they gave us templates of what they wanted to see in our public participation plan, and truthfully, that's why we put it in the introduction, because it was so detailed, and we didn't quite know where it fit anywhere else, because it was sort of this global piece. And so, and again, the state, when they wrote back, you know, because we'd worked with them, because it's their requirement, they didn't have any issues. They thought it had everything they needed. But again, too, with every amendment cycle, we can change it if all of a sudden Autumn invents some better way to do public participation, which would be really great, Autumn. You know, we could put that in and take out the schedule, or take out whatever it is. We were just trying to address what we do and how, and make it fit into what the state was asking, to be sure that there's a publicly accessible public participation plan for the comprehensive plan.
Okay. So one specifically, on one of those, on page VI, page six, under Opportunities for Open Discussion, the first bullet says, "Online dialogue and interaction activities through social media or website." So giving it's a title of open discussion, I thought the characterization of online dialogue through, open discussion through online means, I just, I think that characterization. I think it's kind of hard to have open discussion online. We haven't really been using that. We kind of tend to meet in meetings, but to really, and I think all the dialogue kind of is, and is necessarily, is done online, goes through our communications department. Well, there's so many other members of staff and council and other stakeholders who don't participate in that. And I don't think we've been using that channel for open discussion.
Right.
So that one kind of jumped out at me as, as a characterization, that's, it just didn't seem to fit. In that same section, the last bullet, it says, "Youth engagement activity through partnerships." And I was wondering if we had any examples of that.
I spoke to the, the youth advisory board last year about the central plan and their ideas, and what they wanted to see in the future, and would they ever run for office, and those kinds of things. And so we're trying to, to help them on, you know, like the old civics classes, when, you know, some of us were younger, where you, you'd actually try to teach the youth about why, why governments are important, and why it's good to be involved and engaged. And so we have started more of that recently with, of course, the advisory board is amazing, and their staff, and we just had a really great time talking about the central plan. But we hope to continue to do that. Even our work with the schools, we did the garbage and recycle piece on Earth Day, with them to have them understand more about recycling and food waste. And so we're trying to, to work more with the youth, either through the schools or however, to, to get them engaged.
Okay.
And again, we left it a little vague, because as you said, you know, with this whole skate bar, skateboard park moving through, we're getting engaged with more of them through the skateboard park.
Skateboard park.
Am I saying that right? Skate, the new skateboard park, am I saying that right? Yeah. You're looking at me like, am I, it's like, yeah, it's cool. You know, several of them came to the services last meeting. It was just amazing to hear them speak. I was thrilled that, yes, good, good, tell them, tell them. So, so we're trying all sorts of different ways to try to get the youth more engaged.
Further on, then on page IX, nine, in the last paragraph, in the middle, it says, "The vision of Central Isiqua is to transform the 11,000 acres from suburban.
That's a good typo. PSRC saw that one, too. It's at the bottom. Thank you.
I think it's probably something under 11,000.
Yes. We, we missed the comment there.
Is there an extra one in there?
Yes.
Extra zero.
Catch, though, you're the only, the second one that caught that, so good, that's good.
It's still not 1,100 acres. I'm not, I don't, well, nine hundred.
The whole thing is, it's only 900 developable.
Developable.
The whole boundary to boundary is.
Right.
It's certainly not.
There's some other smaller Scrivener errors in here, I'll pass on to you as well.
Okay.
It says coordinate, it said coordinated. Those were my comments. Stacy?
So the, so I'm, I agree with Paul on the detail about the, the public engagement. And I'm not sure what the state, I, it's not that I'm not sure, I don't know what the state requires and how, what kind of format they required in, and what kind of detail. But Bellevue's comp plan has a citizen participation element, and it's very short, it has eight policies. And so I'm wondering if, if not this year, but maybe, maybe in the future, and I don't know if that's like in another year or two, or do we wait for a major amendment? Do we maybe add an, an element that's citizen participation? I think that's one way to think about doing it. Because I'm not sure that explaining everything that we did for public outreach is necessary, I guess, in the document?
It seems a bit procedural instead of policy.
Yeah, exactly.
Right. And I think they sent us some samples, and I think we used Kirkland's and Redmond's, sort of tried to condense it into, you know, this is how we do it, this is when we go out for, you know? So we, we tried to do the condensed, we can look at Bellevue's and see if we want to, instead of condensing it to, did it in one.
Well, I thought, I don't, I think Mary Lou said it the right way. I think it's, it's, it's process versus policy.
It's implementation versus policy.
Well, it's explaining what you did, what the process was, over this is what our policy is, that guides us what we do.
You're suggesting that maybe it's not something that happens this time, but during the next, during an annual update, we create a new element?
Sure.
It could certainly be one of the work plan pieces that we're going to come up with.
And you said citizen, but it's more than citizen, that, right? Because they also went to commissions, which we included.
Well, I'm just looking at, Bellevue's just says citizen participation element, so it's an element of their comp plan. I don't know how hard it would be to take what we've done already and turn it into an element between now and June, but that was just.
That's the first I've heard of that, and, and, Trish, you admitted yourself that, it's like, okay, well, where do you put this?
Right. And I can see why they made it a separate piece.
That would seem to be more, I mean, it's, it seems like we're reaching, that's what this is attempting to do, it's rather element-like, but it's just happened, you put it in the introduction because you couldn't put it anywhere else.
So sort of, how did we get this document? We went out and talked to lots of people, and that's how we got it.
Yeah, but.
That's why we put it in the front, right?
Yeah, but it also does kind of talk about just public engagement in general, so, so.
I can see it lending itself to a separate.
Okay. Josh, you had?
Oh, thanks. So first, for what it's worth, I also, like Nina, like the list that's in there, but I also agree with the comment about tying it more closely to the revised elements. For me, that sort of looked like a meta-level view of what the comp plan's all about. Here's like, the top 15 list of things in the comp plan, these very high-level types of ideas, that if you don't want to read, you know, a multi-volume tome, you can just kind of look at the introduction and go, here's what's important to the city, in, you know, 25 words or less. The one comment I had on the introduction is on the top of page 10, on the housing element, there's, there's a couple of words in the first sentence that didn't quite equate with the actual element, and that's the words "to every resident" at the end of sentence one.
That parts the PSRC quote.
Okay. Because the, the idea of having affordable, healthy, and safe housing choices is not limited necessarily to intra, you see what I'm getting at? It's not for residents. It's for prospective residents as well as residents. It's for individuals who want to come to Isiqua but can't afford to live in the community. So the way that reads is it essentially suggests that we will provide these types of housing choices as options for people who live here to move within the city. And that doesn't quite comport with the actual element, which talks about promoting a diverse housing supply.
Right. And that's why our element, our little summary is right below it, the housing and human service elements. The, the piece above it is the quote from PSRC that we have to show how we match that, how we, how we're forwarding what they're asking us to do, and theirs is the first one. And ours is the answer, the housing and human service elements.
If you look at page 47 of the packet, you'll see it better, because it's invented correctly.
But even that second one talks about housing options for the city's population and local workforce. It still doesn't include prospective residents, which, if you look at the actual housing element introduction, it talks about promoting a diverse housing supply and preserving existing housing stock, maintaining residential neighborhood quality, and providing opportunities that will assist in the development of affordable housing for low and moderate income families. So there, it talks about families, but it doesn't limit it to our population, our workforce, our residents. It's, it's about providing opportunities for people who are interested in joining the community, as well as those who already live here. So the, it just didn't seem to connect for me, and maybe PSRC wants that, but I, I don't know, I don't know how to make that match.
Right. We were just summarizing, but we can add that to the, to our little summary there, of what our elements do to provide for what PSRC is asking for. We can add a couple more sentences to make it beefier, because you're, as you're right, they are in the element. We are doing that. This is, this is just to show PSRC, they asked us for a comparison of how we're meeting their goals. And so we just are summarizing how we are, but we can add those two sentences from the element to show.
Maybe what I'm missing is just why we have to put in our introduction to our comp plan, language that PSRC wants to see in that.
Well, it's not, it's a requirement this year for the periodic update, that you have to show how you're meeting Vision 2040's policies. So we pulled out, as well as, you can see it better on the, the not track changes, is we have their housing piece, and then how we meet it. Their transportation piece, and how we meet it.
Does it say that that's their piece?
No, we need to put it in.
Okay. Maybe that's the part I was missing.
It's in italics to make it.
Yeah, we, we actually have made that change, so that, so that the top one is in italics, and there's a reference in the, in the introductory paragraph of 2040 that says, that explains the top one, you know, the one in italics is verbatim, the 20, the Vision 2040 goal. And below that is the city's, how the city has responded through its comprehensive plan.
Stacy?
I'm not sure this is, addresses, maybe it addresses part of your concern. We just took off the last three words, "to every resident," and "for all people." We just took off the last three words, "to every resident" and "for all people."
That was kind of what I was going to say.
But we can't, we can't do that, that's, yeah, that's their goal.
We're smithing their goal.
Oh, it is our, right.
Well, we have some feedback for them.
It's confusing. And the economic part too, because I, I like that you commented that their economic part didn't make a lot of sense either.
Well, I'll add in there too, I have, there's no, there's no value added by the word "stock" in that sentence. Right, and I think it starts to mis...
I was curious.
I don't think that word's needed at all. So, so anyway, we have some feedback for them to consider.
Right. Do you give us changes? We give them. Partnership.
Thanks, Trish.
Kind of.
Kind of a partnership, exactly.
Band-Aids don't really feel like a partnership, do they?
They're kind of a, yeah.
Josh, did you have any other comments about this?
Oh, uh, not, not on the introduction. As we get into other elements, I had a comment, yeah.
Are there any other of Nina? Is there, first of all, so there was, everybody had a chance who has a comment about the introduction, have said anything? Okay, Nina?
Yeah, this is a different comment.
Good.
Uh, in the, and I'm sorry, everybody's, I'm looking at the, um, Jennifer, the real document, but it doesn't matter if you can find just the very first two paragraphs. The first one starts in 1990, and then the second one says, "When Issaquah completed the comprehensive plan in 1985." So it's the very first, um, I will go up.
Right under introduction.
Yeah, it's the very first. So in the, um, oh, boy, I'm looking at the real words here. Let's see if I can find it. Yeah, the next sentence is the same, I'm going to scroll down. Can you scroll down just a little bit?
Is there a word you're searching for?
Well, yeah, I'm looking in the, um, the opening comments, and the gist of, maybe, Jennifer, let me just tell you what I'm looking for, maybe I'm just looking in the wrong place. The, um, the language that I was understanding here to say that, uh, looking ahead to 2035, an accommodation of the housing and job growth required by the state, it is the responsibility of the city to manage projected growth.
It's in red. It's right in there. Second.
Oh, oh, look, and it's in red, I just was being colorblind right there. Okay, good. So, um, my comment is that this phrase is saying accommodation of housing and job growth required by the state, but this paragraph says nothing about our projected growth being significantly greater than what's required by the state. The way that this is written implies that we are simply satisfying the minimums required by the state, and we have a responsibility, and we have to do this. But later on in the document, it shows that the, um, job and housing requirements by the state are lower than our targets. And I, I think it's misleading, especially in the first couple paragraphs of a document where, for the public, they may not get past this, uh, to not indicate the true, uh, plan. So I, I haven't crafted words to place in there, I, I wanted to show that that was a mis...
Well, we can certainly add that in there, and again, this was written and just to show how we were meeting GMA, but we can certainly put the byline in there too, that not only are we meeting GMA, but we've gone beyond that.
In order to become a regional growth center, or whatever it is, yeah. Yeah, I think it's important to include that in the paragraph. Okay. And, um, that's it for the introduction.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments about the introduction? Okay, thank you, Jennifer. And Trish, when you put your pen down, we'll know you're done catching up. So Charlie, while she's doing that, you want to introduce this last seven minutes?
Sure, in the last seven minutes, we are looking for any major concerns, major issues, sort of major remaining work items, besides going through each of the elements in detail, which we're certainly going to be doing with each of the committees in another round. Uh, what we're looking to flag right here, though, are things that could, could really, uh, where we need to put resources on them in the next few weeks, and really intensely work on them. For example, potentially creating that element around participation. Um, you know, we're going to evaluate that, take a look at that, see if we can do that. Uh, that's exactly the kind of stuff we're looking for. So if there are other things that sort of fall into that category, if, for example, you were to say, and I'm not suggesting this by any stretch, trust me after last year, that you wanted to think about concurrency policy at this point, and, you know, look at making revisions to that, that would be a very big discussion, uh, and not something we could, as you probably recall from last year, do in a month. Uh, but those are the kinds of things we need to understand right now, because we're going to go down a, a path that takes us into detailed edits, and then comes back to the whole council with a package that has been vetted pretty thoroughly by each of the committees, and we want to make sure that what we bring back is as close to the target as it possibly can be. There's going to be some trust in that, obviously, in the system that we have, where you're going to need to trust your fellow committee members to some extent, uh, in, in the work that they've done in the detailed editing, but the high-level policy pieces that are in each of those elements, it's really important that we have a sense from, you know, majority of the council that, that that's the direction you want to go, and there aren't major work items that are stealthily waiting for us in June, uh, when we come back to you. That's where we are, and also it suggests, you know, there are some things that, for example, the element that was suggested tonight, uh, that could be parking lot items, that are things that could go into future work plans, and so if there are things of interest in that regard as well, we can kind of flag those and, and, and set those aside for after this update, the things that we can work on in the comp plan to improve it.
So with that guide, uh, Josh, you indicated already that you had something...
Yeah, it's not, but it's not a major put people on it, it was just a wordsmithing thing, follow-up from committee.
What section?
Uh, Transportation.
So we're going to have a, okay. Um, so we're going to have a chance to look at it, you can give it them tonight, you want to, does that, let me, so, so I'm going to ask you to hold that for just a minute. So per Charlie's request, um, is, so I see two hands, I see Nina and Stacy, Nina, why don't you go ahead and go first? Does anybody else have something they're going to, and Toll as well? Okay.
I might have one other.
Okay. Nina, Stacy, and Toll.
Okay. Okay. So one of them we touched on a moment ago, and that had to do with the Issaquah treasures, and how do we handle those? And do they become a real part of the comprehensive plan? Uh, honestly, right now, I can't even find them. I've looked in Google searches, I've looked in website searches, I've looked everywhere. So that is something that is kind of a big, and I, and I want to make sure that we tackle that, however we do. And then another one had to do with parks, and the reason why I think that this is a, kind of a bigger thing is because it's pervasive in the language throughout the, um, the comp plan. Uh, the concern from the public and myself too, uh, was that these should be fully developed, remember? And then there's been a response to that, that maybe they'll be fully enhanced, you know, maybe we'll change that language. But here is a, a suggestion I wanted to present as possibly helping this, um, topic along even better, and that is that, uh, park, to look at the definitions for park, and maybe we need a definition for open space, that helps to distinguish this and, and, uh, quell this fear of, of are we going to be developing everything that we have that is considered called a park, when some of them are open space? Anyway, it just seems that there's a little bit more work to do with that one. Not answering it right now, I'm just bringing that up.
So before you go, is that, does that make sense?
Yes. You know what I'm talking about, Trish, don't you?
Right.
Yeah. So I was thinking maybe in definitions, that could help distinguish where that fully enhanced, fully developed, um, expectation would be applied.
We've had this before, and just the short answer is, we need different definitions for grants, to go out for grants, and so a zoning definition of open space, that we're allowed to have, you know, lines, utility lines under it, is different than an open space like a native growth protection easement that's also open space, but we can take a shot at trying to figure out sort of the multifaceted definitions for these, because this comes up a lot.
And my, my goal...
Because we use it for different pieces.
So my goal is to limit the areas that would be fully developed. I think that's what the concern is of, of the, of the public, that's the concern of mine. And then, I had one more, sorry. Well, just to mention, uh, because it is in other elements that the other committees are looking at, but we're talking about it in land and shore, uh, that one of my concerns was that when we have cleaned up this document and taken out things that are supposed to be not policy, but are supposed to be code, there's a gap between when we take them out of the comp plan, and the comp plan's adopted, and the time it takes for us to implement them as code. And so I'm thinking about, well, what do we, what do we do about that gap period if there's a standard that we want to maintain? You know, it could be six months, it could be a year, I don't know, it could be, how long does it take to take the things that we're removing from here, you know, like the L, the 1.1, 1.3, maybe those.
We're looking at the code already, but I see what you're...
But there are a couple of, yeah, so, anyway, just to bring that up as a general topic.
Is your general topic that we don't have as a policy on the time, uh, timeframe in which to actually make necessary code revisions?
Yeah, my, yeah, my concern is that there will be a time between taking, removing things from here, if they aren't already in code, determine which ones are not, and how to deal with those, so that there's not a, a period of time where we don't have a standard or enforcement for something that may be very important to us.
Okay.
Yeah, and, um, I'm, before I close, I want to, um, support Stacy's comment about adding the, um, public engagement, um, element, because putting it on a high level, on a table of content sort of level, um, shows a commitment to that. I appreciate you bringing that in. Okay, thank you. That's it. Stacy?
Um, okay, I had, uh, have one question in the land use section, talk about, um, the city being divided into number of sub-areas. Uh, one of them is Lake, I think that's what it says, 15 sub-areas, Lakeside, is that an actual sub-area?
It's the development agreement, Lakeside.
Okay. Um, so if that's the standard, is a development agreement, um, to have a sub-area, then should there be Raleigh in here?
Raleigh's in the central plan, and we talk about them as the same, you know, that it's within, so we just use that as the central plan. But Lakeside didn't fit into the high, it's sort of up there, didn't fit into the Highlands.
Sure. Except it's governed by a development agreement as well.
Right.
So I see that's, to me, that's a distinct sub-area.
When you look at the central plan sub-area, though, Raleigh is in it, and so that's the only one that's actually, it would be a sub-area within a sub-area, which would be awkward, whereas Lakeside is next to, it's, nothing else could govern Lakeside. So it's not, I, I should say it the other way, a development agreement doesn't make it a sub-area.
Yep.
But in some of them, that was the only way we could differentiate.
It seems like it needs to be, there needs to be a mention in here somewhere about that.
It's within the central.
Yeah, maybe so. It just stuck out.
Or even, how about a statement, just that many of the areas within existing sub-areas are governed by development. Just to say that that is something we need to set up.
We only have one.
It's just the one.
Within.
Right.
It's only within it.
So...
Sorry, there's also Costco in this.
And Costco, yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, soon we forget. Um, okay, and in no particular order, the, um, economic vitality section element, um, it was very, to me, very business-focused. It's very narrow. And, um, to me, the economic, is it called, the economic vitality, um, element should be focused on, um, the economy, and part of that would be the business community. And so, um, I would, um, suggest looking at that to see how that could be broad, much broader. In fact, I'm not sure I saw much of anything on local economy or what we do to strengthen that. Um, there, uh, I appreciated the slide that we saw earlier about, um, what the elements, difference between, um, the goal and the policy and the implementation, and as I read, um, there were specific, um, elements that I paid, um, particular attention to this time around because some are being looked in, um, looked at in committee, and, and the one, some of them that I looked at still had, you know, really a lot of implementation pieces. Um, land, land use, human services, housing, and cultural seem to have a lot of, um, detail and a lot of implementation, which I think is partially great news, because that means , um, a lot of the work for the implementation is already done, it just needs to be moved out.
You mentioned four of them, I missed.
Yeah, land use, uh, human services, housing, and cultural. Um, and then the human services one, um, struck me as being very, very specific, when I, uh, my impression is the document is supposed to be sort of high-level policy. So that's not, my comment is not taken to mean that they're not, those aren't good things. I'm just wondering if it's not high-level policy, it's very specific.
Okay. I think part of their reason is they don't have a cloud document that helps them, they just have programs and budgets, and so I think that's probably why there's a lot of details, but we can, we can...
Sure.
...get it again to see if we can pull it up again.
And I think, um, my sense when I'm reading, um, especially the human services one, uh, is a good example. When you have, um, you know, a, a commission that does great work and is very passionate about what they do, and they're developing policy, they also have really great ideas about how to implement, how to pull things off, and I'm just not su, so that's what I think you get, that you get wrapped up in doing all of those things at the same time. So that's what struck me as maybe what happens in some of these, we have really good work, but maybe the implementation pieces get mixed in with the policy. And that's all.
All right, thank you, Toll.
So I, I have one where, uh, you know, some of these are differing on how you get to, to a goal that everybody agrees on, but, um, we identified, sorry, we identified one in, um, committee that I wanted to share with the rest of the council, because I think it, it really might represent a philosophical difference, and, um, if we could go to page 71 of the packet, um, it's land use policy L1. If you just stay in the, in the packet, but scroll down, or go down to page 71, I don't know how you...
No, hey, me, go ahead, go down.
It's the egg one in house, in land use.
Okay.
And then, go ahead, go down.
I'm waiting.
Just go.
We'll make it.
No, I don't want track changes, I just want page 71 of the packet.
Well, so...
That's what I'm...
She has a different form of, what's a key phrase that she can...
Uh, policy L1.
Agriculture.
Yeah, agriculture, but agriculture is listed, there's, there's 20 references to the word agriculture.
Once you open up that document, you can just search for that phrase.
Yeah, policy L1 would be the, would be the good thing to, to search on.
It might take just a second. Oh. Land use policy.
Policy L1.
It's L dash one.
No, it's, it's L1. It's LU space policy space L1.
Just put in L1. Okay. I have to just put in L1. It was thinking.
Sorry, I just, I, I want everybody to be able to see the, the...
Yeah, yeah. I'm finding too that, because there's different forms of these documents, if we actually have a specific phrase, any, all of us can kind of search for that and find it, whichever form we're using. So that helps, like the policy numbers are...
Consider lands. Watch for consider lands.
LU dash one.
Why won't it let me do L?
LU space policy.
LU.
There we go. Nope.
Oop.
Didn't like that either. LU. Wait, just, I'm sorry.
Wait, uh, there, wait, there it is. There it is. You're on the right page, middle of the page.
Little. Right here. Oh.
Oh, you went away.
Nope, it's right here, where the hand is.
Okay, so on the right, LU policy L1, "Consider lands within the Issaquah Creek and Tibbetts Creek Valleys, which are identified as having prime agricultural soils for small-scale agricultural uses." So I, I took a look at the, at the GMA and what it says about agricultural lands, and really, and others are free to disagree, but what I saw in there was preserving, like, basically not boxing out existing agriculture, but I don't think that's what this says. I think this says sort of identify agricultural soils and, and sort of promote the use for small-scale agriculture, and I think that that's out of step with, with, with the tenor of the GMA. I think the GMA wants to, you preserve open spaces, you preserve parklands, but, you know, agriculture is outside the boundary, you know, schools and houses and businesses are, are inside the boundary. I mean, think about, you know, the area at the edge of, thanks, well, thank you, of Tibbetts Valley Park, right? You know, you have, you have properties on the edge there, do you, if, if those became available, would you really want to retrofit them to agriculture, or would you want to think about putting in a sports facility? Right? And so this one, I, I don't know if we decided here tonight, but I, but I think this goal is probably a legacy of when the city was a lot smaller, but it, it doesn't seem to, in spirit, agree with the GMA, as, as I read it. So I just wanted to point it out for fellow council members and see if anybody thought I was crazy, or, or what. And I've, and I mentioned it to staff when we, when we saw it, when I was sitting in on, on land and shore, but I, I wanted to point it out, like I said, because it just, it represents a fundamental philosophical difference between the, the goal, you know, the, what the goal, where the goal is trying to go, and where I think law says and policy says we should be going.
Feedback for Tola?
He's just waiting, he's just waiting for me. Thank you. Tola, so I wanted to, I was hoping you would do the homework on that, you saw my little hint in the email. So, did, does the GMA prohibit us from this kind of language?
I, I don't think it prohibits.
Okay, and I, I can, I can understand that the spirit might be one way, but, you know, I don't know if this is going to be democratically decided, or how, you know, how we then approach this when we don't have such definitive guidance, because I am one of those who is in favor of this, and when I read it, I thought it was great, and then when Tola said, oh, boy, I think the GMA doesn't let us do that, I thought, oh darn, because I liked this, because I think it's important for self-sufficiency, and I think part of, part of the GMA is so that communities are self-sufficient. Agriculture certainly provides for that, and then I also brought up that we participate in the King Conservation District, and at the heart of King Conservation District is soils, and, and we have all seen where misidentifying or not identifying agricultural soils can be, cannot be, they're very difficult to recover. If you can recover them, boy, that's even better. So, I, I was glad to see this and thought it might be helpful in that regard for us, is my opinion.
What staff can do is we can do some options, you know, to maybe pull back some and continue on, just so you all have some options to look at, to see what everyone comes up with, be a way to get through it.
So, does, does this, it's not necessarily saying that we're going to be using them for agriculture uses, but maintaining the agricultural soils, in which we have the P-pods, I mean, the P-pads, and, and even necessarily making sure that we're taking care of our stream buffers, so that it then has a potential for fish and wildlife habitat, which is adjacent to it. So I think that is speaking to making sure that our stream beds are very healthy with the right kinds of soils, maybe not agricultural, but they do, anything that's growing there would be considered to be of requiring quality soils, so that, you know, that the banks can grow properly, so that the fish and the wildlife can then continue to survive there.
Any comments about this one? I want to add one thing. Issaquah Valley and Tibbetts Creek Valley are large parcels, they're not just streamside. It says Issaquah Creek and Tibbetts Creek and the valleys, like the entire valley.
I'd like the opportunity to speak a second time when everybody's had a chance.
Okay, and so I, and I know that this is going to get another chance for discussion at land and shore. The light is flashing at me.
I didn't know you could turn these things off. Since when? So, so, so we're, so I'm just, in the essence of time tonight, in the best use of it, I'm just saying, because we're going to talk about it land and shore again, okay? I just, if you take out the subjunct, I think subjunct, subjunctive clause in the first sentence, what you get is left with is, consider lands within those areas for small-scale agricultural uses, which, that's what that, that's what that sentence is. The second sentence, I did think about this, Eileen, because I thought perhaps this was speaking to improving water quality, but it's really not, it's just saying that if you're going to consider it for small-scale agricultural uses, it needs to be done in a way that protects water quality and potential fish wildlife habitat, which I think we all, we all agree with that. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Josh, thanks for your patience.
Oh, sure, no problem, thank you. So, I had a quick-hit comment, because if I don't bring it up, I'm probably going to forget it by the time we get to infrastructure, and then I had something that's maybe a little more detailed. So in the transportation element, we talked in committee about the concurrency implementation being put into the comp plan, and I can't give you a page number, because there's none on the track changes, but it's under T policy C2, where it says, "Development proposals that exceed the trip bank capacity shall do one or more of the following to achieve concurrency." And then there's four things. And I went back and I looked at the concurrency ordinance, and it's actually far more complicated than on section A. A says, "Add the transportation system capacity necessary to meet the concurrency adopted level of service," is one of those choices, and it's actually a lot more than just adding the capacity, because the ordinance talks about, "Build or provide a mitigation strategy and provide a financial commitment for the transportation facility improvements necessary to achieve concurrency." And so, you know, and then it goes into this whole thing in the ordinance about all these other things, administrative approval, city council approval, it's, it's a lot more complicated than what the comp plan says, and so what I was thinking there is on A, perhaps just adding a couple of words, so we don't have to get down into the weeds, but we just say, you know, A can be, add the capacity, and other, other things necessary, or I don't know what language you want to put there.
Can we just reference the ordinance?
Or, or just reference the ordinance, the, the only issue I had with that, because that was my first thought, is it seemed a little weird to me to be writing a comp plan element based on an ordinance that we, it almost is the reverse order that you would expect policy to be created, but that would be one way of resolving it, or you could just say consistent with adopted concurrency requirements.
And did you see that in the Q and A, we made the changes that everybody asked for in infrastructure?
In the Q and A?
The council.
I thought that was the Q, or I thought, I thought this was the updated, the track changes.
Oh, maybe so. Okay, so you're saying we didn't.
I, I just went back and looked at A after we had talked, and that was one that popped out, because it was much more complicated than what we said here, and just by adding a couple of words, like adding capacity and the other things required by our concurrency ordinance, then it's consistent with the actual ordinance. So that was, is a quick-hit issue.
Okay.
The stuff that's.
We'll relook at that.
Sorry.
The stuff that's a little more complicated actually turns on things we're going to be talking about later this evening, which are the city goals, and depending on whether or not certain goals get adopted, there may be implications for the comp plan, particularly the capital facilities element, I was looking at that, and there is a section on fire level of service, which talks about using EFNR or a different level of service if we were to return to an independent fire department, but there is a goal that Eileen has concerning an RFA, and whether that might be another option for the city to pursue, and if that gets adopted by the council, then there may need to be some changes in this section of the capital facilities element, because it essentially suggests that we've got EFNR or our own department, but there's no consideration for another model in there, so some of that hinges on one step needing to occur in terms of the goal adoption process, and then similarly, I still have a hard time finding the emergency management stuff in the actual comp plan, but we're going to talk about a goal that I had proposed concerning emergency management, and I noticed there's nothing in the capital facilities element dealing with capital planning for emergency management, which is a component of that goal, so when we get to it, I can talk more about that item, but again, that's something that, if that gets adopted, there can be implications in the capital facilities element. So I think those were the, the big things.
I appreciate that, and I, I think that will put, an extra, Christopher, are you listening, burden on goal setting in the retreat and the results, because I think it is, which is going to happen, you know, in early June, but it's still a month from today, almost, oh, four weeks from today, almost, that maybe could still drive comp plan changes.
The 2016 goals? Or are they the?
It's, it's, we get to decide.
Okay. Because I thought we had some time.
We do, but.
Actually.
And so that might need to come out, so that may, maybe that's got to be part of the conversation that we have, you're absolutely right.
We'll do our best.
Yeah, yeah, no, we'll have, and let's, let's just make sure we have that conversation when we consider the goals. Josh, did you have any more?
Um, no, I was going to ask, where, where is the emergency management stuff?
Utilities.
It's in, okay, I just could not find it. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Is there anybody else with, okay, so that wraps up our first agenda item for tonight. Charlie, do you have any questions for clarification? Are you good?
Just one comment going forward, so we have services and safety tomorrow evening, it'll be basically the same information, for those of you that, who will be there, that you already have had in your packet for this meeting. But after that, we have two meetings the following week, the 19th and the 21st, we'll be issuing updated documents, and when we update, we're not going to go back into the track changes version that we've already put out, because that is going to get even more confusing if we start doing that. So instead, we're going to use track changes and make updates to the clean version, so essentially, we're, we're letting go of the old track changes, you can still go back to that stuff, but, and see how we got to that iteration, but now we're going to go forward and make track changes on the, the clean version, and that should be relatively easy for you to see what we've heard and, and where we're proposing to go in response to what we've heard.
Stacy?
I just wanted to say thank you very much for putting together the, the area in the, in the plan that showed why we were doing things that we were doing, because otherwise, I mean, some of it, I was like, oh, this is crazy, oh, we're required to do that. So, very helpful.
I, I want to echo that, I think that was very helpful for, for adding that element, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Mary Lou?
Just one comment on the emails that went out last week and this week, too, has been, I think that when they lay it out, staff lays out all that information and all this vigil means in email, it really helps me see what we are in process, so I like that constant communication.
Good. Good, good email, Charlie.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, so let's, we're going to take a small break, when that, when the big hand is on, when that clock says 7:57, we're starting again, that's five minutes from now.
Sure. You know, I. How do they turn this off?
Yeah. Which is how they hit the button.
Well, when you're up there, it's, it's up there, that is mute, so when I really leaned over to you, I thought I was getting it.
I see.[1342.13]
We are in there. Can I go knock?
Yes.
Josh.
Oh, I had to move.
But the most important part, I think, is going to be as we go through the 11 proposed goals. And I believe, Emily, are you going to be leading that section? Who's going to be leading that section? Okay, so, and this is, when we get there, I'll say a few more words, but right now, Autumn, over to you. Thank you.
Okay, sure. So I'm just going to do a brief overview of our existing goals. We have 18 current goals. You guys remember the process. It's been a year now since that process last time where we really nailed down action plans, timelines, budgets for each goal, and kind of came to an agreed-upon plan. Things have changed since then, so we've made updates to those timelines and costs. One area that we have been trying to work on is figuring out how to best communicate staff time and the impact of staff time with each of these goals. So we created these three buckets as a way to communicate to you guys what a workload would be. So one would be minimal, so less than 250 hours per year. The next is substantial, so anywhere between 250 and 2,000 hours a year. And then extensive, which is more than 2,000 hours. So you'll see these words and these types of buckets on both the existing goals and on the proposed goals when we're trying to communicate just the impact on staff time and workload. So I created a new timeline this time, and I'd welcome your feedback on how this looks. But I was looking for a way to kind of do a snapshot of the goals and kind of where we are. So you'll see that the goal is listed, the estimated costs for this year and beyond, the current and future action items for that goal, and then an area to show whether they're completed in 2015, 16, or ongoing. So you'll see we are really busy this year. There is a lot going on in 2015. The bike and ped plan was presented to council on January 5th. We have the regional growth center designation, the IPZ and SWOT analysis, defining a plan for Rainier Trail, the tourism business plan, plan for neighborhood parks, enhance Old Town Vitality, the Central Issaquah Anchor Project. And then there's a few who kind of bleed into a couple of years. So we've got the skate park, which construction would begin in 2016, a strategy for Route 200 and 928, a professional marketing packet once the IPZ designation is done. And then we've got other goals that will have an ongoing element for many years. So the Lake San Amos State Park, improving key intersections throughout Issaquah, measuring and reporting on city services, the affordable workforce housing, the healthy community strategy, the mobility master plan, and the safe and drug-free community.
So, so that does help.
Okay.
Completed this year, completed next year, but so that means there's nothing that we've already identified that we think will complete in a given future year. It's just, everything else is ongoing.
It's, yeah, it's ongoing. And I think that some of these goals will have a better understanding of a work plan, like, say, the healthy community strategy as we continue on that goal. So I think there's some here that I just didn't see an actual endpoint to. Another, you know, another example is the measuring and reporting on city services. We did that goal, but that doesn't, I mean, you guys may want to do another survey in another year or two. So do we continue with that goal? Is it living on, or do we want to say that that goal is completed? So there are some that are worthy of some discussion about that. There's some that have really tangible, actionable timelines and others that we probably should discuss.
Can I ask, is the measure and report city services, is that the dashboard goal? You're asking the wrong person. Uh, well, so...
Oh.
So I believe this was a different one. The dashboard one was like, actually, I think, from like 2012, if I remember right. So this one had a desire, and we ended up doing the community survey, if I remember right, as part of this, to try and find a way to effectively start to measure and communicate the services and quality of services that we're providing to the community. Thank you.
So I think for follow-up, for your question on how to handle those, we will be revising the council handbook. And that might be a place where we could find homes for adopted policy, which really started with a goal, and it's something that then we can review in that context every year. So we can talk about that as a way to handle it. Thank you.
And that leads into my next slide about, you know, this is the time to receive review and feedback from the council on the changes we made to those goals. And one option could be, we could come back with an agenda bill after the retreat with some recommendations. Say, the bike ped plan is now complete. Can that goal be done? So we could come back with some recommendations to you after the retreat for goals that may be completed or that may need some more refinement or changes. So it's one option.
Paul?
Yes.
So is there going to be some conversation on this year's goals at the retreat? Because that's what I thought I missed her.
Yeah, I was just going to address that. And I'm kind of going through the list in my mind. I don't think we were not planning on doing a thorough review of them. I think the, discussed it and kind of putting together this year's plan originally considered, hey, let's revote on the existing goals. But you know what? The truth is, we voted on those. We've adopted them. They're integrated into work plans. And I think, and so I think that this reporting is really all that, at least that I felt was necessary, because we've decided on these issues. And so discussing, getting updates, maybe necessary input from the council and for staff, and whether we handle that at a retreat or at the retreat or some other forum, I'm open. The focus of the retreat is going to be on the new ones, definitely.
Yes, and I don't see any reason to reopen any of these.
That's right.
But maybe some additional information. I mean, there's a couple of these that are definitely long-term type goals. And is there just some point at which we say these become part of policies or, you know, what, how do we keep them going? You know, there was two of them. Healthy community strategy, that's just going to be sort of an ongoing that will sort of be wrapped into pretty much what we'll be doing as we look at different issues and items.
So, yeah, okay. I'm not sure we have a good answer for this. It's the same kind of question I was trying to address when I said maybe a place for some of these as reminders to council could be in the handbook as long as it's updated every year. Stacy, then, and then Josh?
So I have a couple of comments. Yep, I think Paul is right. The conversation we've had about goal setting and reviewing the existing goals had been on the agenda tonight so that as we move forward over the next month and we go to goal setting, they're on our minds what we already have going on, what the budget implications already are. So that's, there was not a plan to have any sort of a discussion at goal setting. And then the second comment I would make is with reference to some goals being perhaps absorbed in the city's work plan, part of the revamping of the goal-setting exercise, hopefully, is it, well, not hopefully, is intended to address that issue. When you have a goal and it just says, do this, what does do this mean? And so that's why it's important to have those action steps so when we know when all of those boxes have been checked, then we're done.
Okay, Josh?
So I know, I wouldn't say a lot, but certainly some of these goals, including ones that are proposed for this year, are multi-year goals. And when I look at the list of existing goals, there's some that jump out at me that I say, well, according to this chart, completed in 2015, but I don't think that's really the full story. You know, enhance Old Town Vitality, you know, the Old Town Task Force will have recommendations by the end of 2015. Well, there's no orange line for ongoing. That one should be ongoing because the project has not been completed, let alone begun. So, you know, when it says completed in 2015, it's a little bit inaccurate. You know, certain phases of it were completed in 2015 or expected. Same goes for the improved key intersections. You know, the IJR and shoulder lane conversions are currently under consideration, the transportation package. Well, one could say that if we don't get them in this transportation package, you know, we're not going to get them at all because there's probably unlikely to be some other package coming out of Olympia. So in that sense, you could say it's 2015 or bust. But at the same time, it's an ongoing effort to make sure that we can get the state to cooperate in improving those key intersections. So, you know, that piece of it is going to be completed in 2015, the lobbying efforts, but not the implementation of the IJR and the next steps in that process. So I don't have an issue with the action items. It's just sort of the timeline on some of these doesn't quite match.
And that's where we got into the discussion last year about having actionable items and actionable goals. So like for the enhanced Old Town Vitality, if you look at what the description of the goal is, it's having the public investment in 2015 and also forming the ad hoc committee that would have some recommendations for the mayor. Once those things are done, I'm taking this literally and saying that that goal is done.
Yeah, and that's spot on. You're doing exactly, I think, what our expectation was. And I think what Josh is referring to is that many of them may spur follow-on action. And those are to the letter, not part of the goal. So I think, whereas probably what motivated the goal was a certain kind of outcome, and the actual measurable piece was really an intermediate outcome. So I think that's the part that we still need to decide on how we retain the original genesis of the ultimate outcome that we want, say, you know, Old Town Vitality, even though the goal technically is complete. So I don't have any answer for that, but I think Autumn is doing exactly what we set out to do in, if you look at the specifics of the action and measurable items in these goal. Any other comments? Josh, you good?
Yeah.
Okay. Stacy?
Is this the end or?
Did you have more?
Yeah, it's the end. Okay, whoa, then go. So the sheets that are included in the agenda packet, so it seems to me that the actual steps are missing. So it's got a lot of updating on what, where we are, what we've done, what we're doing, what we plan to do. As I looked at, I looked outside of the packet at the other documents we originally had, it seems like the action steps aren't in here. Is that right?
The, we've changed a lot of the action items in the past year. So they, if you look back, are you referring to looking at last year's worksheets?
No, it's like some of them, the action steps weren't even on here anymore. So it ended up to be more of an update for council on where we are on these goals. That's kind of how I read it, and so I was wondering if maybe I missed, maybe I'm wrong, or is that what we...
We kept most of the action items. There was a few maybe that dropped off on something that we maybe did a couple of years ago. So I kept it just to 2013 and moving forward.
So the tourism plan, so it says, the Greater Issaquah Chamber hired tourism expert Roger Brooks to develop a business plan. So that wasn't an action step. The action step would have been to create a tourism plan or something. See what I mean?
So that one preceded us having action steps in our goals.
We created action steps.
Oh, subsequently.
My point is that the action steps, so the action steps got turned into what we did.
Yes.
Instead of, this was the action step, and then we just checked it. So you took it one step further and explained what we did to complete it. That was my, that was my point. And so it's a conversation about how we want to do this.
How you want to document it.
Yeah, that's what my concern is about.
Okay. Do you want to have that conversation? Or is that just for the record?
Well, I don't know that we have to have it right now.
Okay.
I think the concern, I mean, one of the concerns we've talked about is having a whole complete history, you know, no, you know, sort of breaks in the chain.
Right.
And so now we have document here in front of us that action steps have been turned into what we have done to complete that action step, but I don't know what the original action step said.
Okay, okay.
I'm not saying she's doing it wrong. I'm just saying that's a conversation that at some point we need to have about how we want to make sure that the chain is consistent the whole way through.
Right, and we may have some gaps for those that preceded what we're going to do this year because we definitely, part of, and we're going to talk about that, I wasn't planning on going into it in a lot of detail tonight because we really want to cover the content of the proposed goals tonight. But the actual proposed goals tonight will be part of, we won't, will not lose that lineage. So I'm looking at the tourism business plan that there's a link to right now, just as an example. And that going forward, the actual proposed goal, the why, the action steps, any changes that we make during the retreat are going to be attached to this going forward. So that's, because that's the real original language. See, that's the way I would like to keep track of that. And I think then, once we do that, we won't have those gaps. We'll have the reference of the original material.
Yeah, and that's kind of, that's a slightly different issue than what I was talking about.
Okay.
You follow what I'm saying on it?
Yep, yep. And I tried that. I tried using our old action items and steps and then doing updates, and it was getting very confusing. Yeah, so in the end, I just said, to simplify it, here's a snapshot of what we've done and where we're going. But you're right, it's different than what you adopted last year through that agenda bill process.
Right.
Because there's, things have changed. Our action items have changed. You know, our approach on some of the goals have changed, so.
Okay.
So, yeah, I see what you mean.
You good? All right, thank you, Autumn. So next up is, well, we're going to talk about the, now we're going to go through the proposed goals that we'll be deliberating.
I'm sorry.
And voting upon at the retreat in June. I'm sorry, Tola, did you want to?
Well, I've been trying, as people have been talking, I've been trying to trace the lineage of that measure city services and report to our residents. It was actually a goal that we adopted in 2013 for 2014. So it's a carryover that way. I would just ask city staff to go take a look at what the actual wording on that is. I can't find the specific wording.
There you go. That's the lineage we can't lose. Right, okay. I'll start again when Bob's done writing his note.
Sorry, I was just really trying to find the details of the goal, and I failed.
We'll double-check his note at leadership on Wednesday. Emily, thank you. Over to you.
Great, thank you. So we are going to walk through each proposed new goal. The format for our presentation tonight will first be for the staff lead to review very briefly the proposed goal and provide, therefore, a little context for what the staff response was. And then we're going to walk through the staff response. Our hope is to then allow time for discussion, really, on each goal so that we can extract a little bit of information from all of you about additional information that you may need in order to be prepared to have an even fuller discussion on June 6. I skipped one step. After staff presents our response, we're going to turn it over to the goal sponsor, council member, and we'll have that council member add to the information that the staff lead presents, further clarify the intent on the goal, just clue us in on the thought process behind the development of that goal. Then after that, we'll have some discussion. We hope to have an exchange, really. Try to get additional clarity on the goal, what was desired as an outcome. We can begin to start having conversation about desired action steps and then collect any questions that you have that we need to then go and spend some time on to gather information, to think through a process, and then we will provide you with that information ahead of and during your retreat on June 6 so that you'll be able to make some decisions about which goals you want to approve, adopt. Yeah.
So I want to emphasize that tonight, we are not deliberating the goals. We are not deliberating the goals. The purpose is to, is really, is to, I think Emily said it very well, you know, because what we did is everybody wrote things down, and we threw them over the wall and said, I hope they understood what I wrote. Now, this is our chance to hear back, our chance to hear back, you know, what staff thought about that. So this is a chance to give a thumbs. You understood me correctly, or maybe you didn't, and maybe this is some more information. But the purpose is clarification, and it's for us to maybe understand the goals as well. If you don't have any questions, you don't have anything to say about your goal that's submitted or about one that's presented, then don't say anything. You don't have to. We're not deliberating them tonight. That's what the purpose of the retreat is. Okay. Thank you.
Just another quick word on context before we get started reviewing goals. I wanted to share what our direction was to staff as they prepared their responses, and that was to really be factual, to provide an objective response, and to include as much background information as we thought was necessary in order for you to better understand our response. And clearly, it was our intention to do whatever we could to interpret the intent of the goal. And in some cases, we actually reached out to the goal sponsor and had some conversations and tried to better clarify the objective. In some of our responses, you have seen, I'm sure... In some of our responses, you have seen, I'm sure by now, that we provided a range of options. That's another place where we need to have conversation, both here and then at the retreat, about which option, if it's one of the ones we've provided or a different one that you would like to consider, is the one that you want to vote on. So we have to share some information and, and decide what level of effort, what amount of resources you want to put into a goal. And so that's why we have provided on a few occasions a range for you to consider. All right. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our first presenter, which is Bob.
Thanks, Emily. So for the benefit of those who don't have this on paper in front of them, I'll read the goal that was submitted by council member Barbara, and it is "To Investigate a Regional Fire Authority." And her description was "Regional fire authority is a special purpose district created by a vote of the people. The legislature in 2004 authorized an RFA in response to urban rural needs and what efficiencies could be gained by regional fire protection. State law provides a framework for cities and fire districts to consider forming an RFA as a way to gain service efficiencies while retaining local control. This goal is to identify and evaluate if there would be benefits to Issaquah to join with District 10 and District 38 and other interested parties to explore an I, an RFA." And so our staff response indicated that, you know, if council so desired to send representatives to attend those meetings of District 10 and 38, we certainly can do so. It's, it's an ongoing issue, so it'd actually be more appropriate as a 2015 action item rather than perhaps a 2016 goal. District 10 and 38 are partners within EFER. I'm not sure of the mechanism they're using now to keep their additional partners in the EFER consortium updated on their goals and, you know, the study that's currently ongoing. But in the recent minutes of the meeting, they indicated that they anticipated this coming to a vote of the people in November of 2015. So there's always benefit to be kind of at the table and understanding what's going on, but there may be other means to, you know, still get information. The broader goal, and, and one of these, if, if, which is kind of beyond what we wrote here, but at the last King County Managers Administrators Meeting, we had a brief presentation that several cities actually have created RFAs in and of and within their own boundaries. And that was really used as a, to kind of as a funding mechanism to provide fire service. That's a little beyond the scope of the goal, but if the goal was really to consider, you know, if an RFA is a effective and appropriate means to provide service, you know, what's going on in 10 and 38 may be just one option that the city may want to consider. So at this point, if you want to, if the city council would like us to participate in this, then I would suggest you kind of have to get into the discussion now because it seems like they're pretty far along in their conversation, and our EFER reps may have a little update on where they kind of are on that, but that's the staff response.
So then we would turn it over to the goal sponsor if Council Barbara wants to make any comments.
Thank you, Emily. For me, this was a goal that I think there is some, some possible efficiencies and service gains that we could, could see from it. And I think as I've been studying this and doing a lot of reading, there is really sort of this trending that are, a lot of the cities and communities within the Washington area are sort of trending towards looking at RFAs, and there's a number of them that have been formed. And I was just looking at this, and, and 10 and 38 are moving along. So I think at this point, there was one point, and it has been changed within the state process and how you can form these, that you had to be in on the ground level and you had to be part of it to begin with, to, to, to be partners in. That's changed now, so even if 10 and 38 do move forward and form their RFA, and if we take a look at this and we think there's value in it and we so choose to want to join, you can also join now as opposed to simply having to be at the beginning and be part of the, the membership in order to be able to be in the RFA. So I thought it was of value after sitting with the, on the, the board of EFER for a number of years, I thought there was value in looking at this for the city. We're always looking at means of which we can have efficiencies within our, our city. So it's something to look at, and then if there is value, we can take the next step.
So Eileen, may I ask, so are you, are you satisfied that the staff understood clearly? Do you have any other requests or clarifications of them?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions for clarification or additional information requests from any other council members on this goal? Tola?
So I'm looking at the costs. So it, so it falls under minimal? It's estimated to be less than a tenth of an FTE or point, point one, one five FTE?
Not, not.
All right.
Not less than a tenth.
Well, 250 hours is about a tenth of an FTE, right? 2,000 hours is an FTE. One point, one.
Not less than a tenth.
Point one two five. I don't know. Yeah. Fifty hours.
Okay, so I think we can move on to the next goal. Thank you.
Great. So next we have Neighborhood Enhancement Goal, and Autumn and Sheldon are going to present that.
I guess I'll stand. So Sheldon and I are gonna, we're going to divide and conquer on this goal. So first, I'm going to talk a bit about the, the section involving neighborhood engagement. So "Create a Neighborhood Engagement Program Focusing on Outreach and Informal Events in Neighborhoods to Discuss Infrastructure Improvements and Neighborhood Issues." So to begin with, to, to really have meaningful engagement with our community, we need to go to them. We can't expect them to come to us. So we already do that in many ways, which I outlined in our response, through our Map Your Neighborhood program, Meet the Mayor, where our mayor, once a month, goes out to the community at rotating locations and talks with citizens about anything they'd like. We have contacts with many HOAs who are active in the community, both through email and also through events. We've gone to HOA meetings in the past. We are a leading example of utilizing social media in local government. A great example of that involving infrastructure is, we had more than 400 community members who voted on their favorite playground equipment designs for both Gibson and Meereen Park, which was really fun. We've done surveys, we're very active in community events, including Salmon Days and National Night Out. We have a report of concern feature on our website, so people come to our website with concerns about a variety of issues, from traffics to sidewalks to our website. They can submit a request, and we've had close to 1,000 now submitted since we launched the website. And then we also have a lot of special projects. As an example, the Bike and Ped Plan. We, we did a lot of outreach in many different venues, including the farmer's market, Issaquah Coffee Company, the bike rodeo, and PCC. So moving forward, we have a few other communication tools in our back pocket that we like to try out. The first is called Next Door, which I'm sure some of you are already active on, but it is a private social network for neighborhoods that's very active now in Issaquah and very popular. So the city's researching how we can participate in that dialogue. It's very much driven by neighbors, but I think there is an avenue for us to participate as a city. Also, we're developing a couple new layers on our website map so that instead of, you know, creating a page, a static page about a certain neighborhood, we can create a, a citywide map that you can zoom in on your neighborhood and see what's going on involving active projects or planned projects. So making it a bit more interactive where you can check in on your area or look at the larger city. So that's a project we're working on now. So we could utilize a lot of these current tools to specifically ask about infrastructure, if you'd like. If you would instead want to do an entirely new neighborhood outreach program that includes, you know, really fun events in neighborhoods, that would require a lot of staff time and, and resources. So there are a lot of other cities that do have a neighborhood enhancement program. Kirkland, Shoreline, Bellevue all have a neighborhood program, and they each have at least one to several full-time FTEs. So I noted in here, no matter how we get that engagement, it's important that it gets back to you guys as the decision makers. So whether that's your part of that process and attending some of those parties if we were to host them, or making sure that we do really clear reporting so that that information gets back to you while you're making decisions. Also, we are working with Leadership ICMA. There's a Capstone team that's working to review our capital facilities plan, and part of that report will include recommendations for public input, and that plan is coming to council as a report in August or September of this year. So we may see some more suggestions there. So that's my section on the neighborhood part, and Sheldon will cover the infrastructure.
Thank you, Autumn.
Well, can I make a little point? Interject something quickly? There's really two big parts to this, and I wondered if you wouldn't let us, maybe, maybe Tola and I talk a little bit to the neighborhood piece before we move into the infrastructure. And it could be that maybe this goal is, maybe it is a little hard, but can we say something now about staff's role?
Yeah, it is, it's two goals. So, I mean, same deal. So I think you were saying that too, so let's comment right now on that question.
So originally, when I proposed, when I was thinking about ideas, it really was the presentation of the emerging issues that made me think about infrastructure and how I like to know what's going on in my neighborhood and why there's a sign over here and what are you going to do to my park. And as I started to work on it with Tola, he brought another excellent avenue to it, which actually to me became the bigger piece. And that was, this isn't about citizen input necessarily, this is about neighborhoods and leveraging the energy that's already there to work with neighborhood groups, to help them enhance, like, whatever they want to do with their neighborhood. So it's a little different than us just reporting out on which roads we're going to fix. It's like, let's leverage that energy that's there or help them establish themselves because that's what will make the neighborhood stronger. And that is the first piece, and I, staff's response, I think, is really good. We do have a lot of these good communication pieces in place right now, but they are more what I would call citizen input communication pieces, not so much neighborhood focus. And what I'm trying to do is leverage the neighborhoods to work with us and make the neighborhoods better for themselves. That's my take on the neighborhood.
So, so I'm not entirely, I'm not sure I completely agree that they're totally separate. I, I think that, like Councilmember Polly, to me, this is about enhancing the engagement of specific neighborhoods. I think this engagement list is a, is a great list of all the ways that the city engages. However, it's really a community engagement list, not a neighborhood. There's, there's a couple pieces that are specific, specific to neighborhoods, the Map Your Neighborhood, Next Door potentially, but all, all the rest of them.
Homeowners' meetings that they can go to.
Yeah. Yeah, oh yeah, I see that one. Yeah, it's, it's incomplete. I live in Timbercrest, and I've never, I've never seen any city engagement. I don't even know what Timbercrest homeowners, if we have a homeowners association, if we do, it's unknown to me. Someone on the street every five or so years has a potluck. So I don't know. And Upper Squawk doesn't have any, there's no coalition. The, the way there is up on Forest Rim, right? The Forest Rim homeowners are all one big happy jolly group and do all sorts of stuff together, but Upper Squawk doesn't really, doesn't really have that. But anyhow, the, the way that I think that this ties into the capital piece is the idea that if you had these neighborhood, if you, if you engaged by neighborhood, you could find out from the neighborhoods where their priorities are. And the idea that the local, the more local your government, the, the smaller the unit, sometimes you can get better information. And so that, that's why these two are together.
Yes. That, that was the linkage that came about, and so I guess it is up for debate whether or not these two, there's two goals here or not. But it was, and I did a little research on my own with the city of Bellevue and just, it's surprising when you go out and ask the neighborhoods what they want done, you get an answer that is prioritized, list of stuff that could be quite different.
So did you hear your view? So since we did hear just half of it, you want to hear the rest of it? Do you agree with comments back to staff?
Thank you.
Thank you, and I guess I'm going to talk about the second part, where in the description it was "To ensure the current resident taxpayers have a neighborhood infrastructure that is well-maintained and up-to-date, and correcting existing deficiencies in neighborhood infrastructure, including pavement condition, utility condition, missing sidewalks, trail linkages, and replace and update inadequate facilities in the neighborhood parks." And with that, under the action items, it was described that there was a 2A, B, C, and D, whereas 2A was sidewalks, develop a prioritized sidewalk construction program, roads, prioritize road maintenance program. Neighborhood parks, the analogy was similar to the Hillside Park project in 2014, identifying neighborhood parks that currently have limited or no recreational facilities. And then 2D was the utilities, you know, completing an annual rate study to address system maintenance and prioritize base criteria on the comprehensive plan dealing with the utility infrastructure. And so in staff's response to this regarding annual reviews of infrastructure, "We anticipate having several conversations about infrastructure needs with the council prioritizing and funding over the next year, whether it's during the deliberations on budget, review of the rate studies that we're currently doing, or revamping the sidewalk rating criteria or approval of a parks master site plan, and so on." Again, I'm going to reference the Leadership Capstone project that's going to give some guidance into prioritization and how the process should work for the capital facilities plans. With that, though, under sidewalks, currently, the sidewalks maintenance is done, I had to put my glasses back on, is prioritized primarily by pedestrian safety and consists of grinding high edges and so forth for pedestrian safety, and that's annually done as citizens give input and also the conditions are viewed and identified by city staff and others. Currently, we do have a list of sidewalk areas that are missing sidewalks or the sidewalk doesn't meet our current standards. That list consists of about 52 linear miles of sidewalk area that meet those conditions, and that's excluding the South Cove-Greenwood Point area, which would include another 18 miles approximately that need to be evaluated and incorporated in some way into the list. To develop a sidewalk program, the city would have to perform the inventory of the South Cove area to make sure that we have a complete list of areas of sidewalks that are either deficient or nonexistent. We'd have to also develop the planning level estimates for the whole sidewalk, so that would be approximately 70 miles of estimating that we'd have to do, and then update the criteria used to select sidewalk projects to help prioritize. Again, recommendations for that would probably come out of the, the Capstone project, how do we get through the CFP prioritization? And then develop the funding program for it. With regard to roads, the city currently operates and maintains a pavement management program, which the council has previously been presenting information on it from the operations director who manages that program. That is a biannual rating for each street section in which pavement overlays are prioritized based upon the pavement rating scores that are on the streets. Yes, sir?
I'm sorry, I, I think there's a really, really fundamental misunderstanding about what the intent of this goal was. The intent was not to say that you didn't have a plan for sidewalks, that you didn't have a plan for roads, that you didn't have a plan for parks, that you didn't have a plan for utilities. We get that. I mean, there's, the city has good planning. The key to this element is, for number two, is facilitate incomplete annual reviews in each neighborhood. So we would want to know what Talis thinks their sidewalk priorities are, what Talis thinks their road priorities are, what Talis thinks their neighborhood parks priorities are, what Talis thinks their utilities priorities are. That's the point of this goal. Not that you guys aren't already doing good citywide planning, but to understand the priorities at the, at the neighborhood level. That's what the intent was here.
So it's a combination of engagement from that first part into the second part and bringing in the neighborhood's engagement into what they think their priorities should be within the neighborhood.
Correct. So that's why I cut you off because?
No, that's okay. I'm fine.
Because I, I would feel bad if you thought that we didn't think you, the city had plans in all these areas. You really do.
No, no, it's just that there's always additional we can always do and accomplish, and so it was that conversation.
And I think you hit the nail on the head. It was more about just saying, "We're coming into your neighborhood next year. We have a plan in place, but we want to talk with you and listen."
Very good. I think we've got that. On some of the asset categories, there was more of an ask, you know, develop a plan in order to achieve X. And I think what we've tried to do is present And I think what we've tried to do is present to answer on all asset categories, both sides. You know, what exists now, what could be further clarified, given policy direction? And then, separate from that, engage with the neighborhood, discuss those priorities, ask for the neighborhoods' separate, maybe distinct, priorities, and then look at ways that we can blend. Because one of the thoughts that we as staff want to make sure gets expressed in this discussion and decision-making on council goals is that we have put in quite a bit of effort to rate these assets and determine priority order in some cases about repairs that need to be made. And there's a lot of different reasons about why we would go about prioritizing and why we would want to push that prioritize list as well. So, we need to, we need to continue discussion about this. We absolutely believe that it's very helpful to have neighborhood-based conversation about which improvements to make, when to make them, how that feedback will affect our prioritization. And yet, we also need to be very cognizant of the fact that we have prioritize lists that are made because of safety reasons or because of funding reasons or a variety of reasons. And somehow, we have to join those up.
So, so, comment? So, you felt that maybe the staff response indicated there was not a clear?
Understanding of your goal.
Correct. That is?
Okay. So, that's why we're, this is exactly why we're having this conversation. And are you satisfied now? Are you satisfied yet? Because it seems to me that maybe we're really asking them to go back and do some more work or at least clarify what we have here.
I would imagine that costs and scope would be different if they knew that they were to be going out to each of the neighborhoods and discussing these things.
Yeah. Maybe this will be, this will help illustrate or not. I'm imagining that there are some amazing neighborhood programs out there that are very complex and they do have staff and they have lots of components and they're really exciting. But that's not what I was proposing right now. It was more about opening the communication, going out to neighborhoods and talking to them, but mostly in terms of a lot of the capital planning that we do, it's, we're coming in to do this sewer job because we have to. I mean, it's not like there's a choice or that's a trade-off, park or sewer. But it's about giving them information about infrastructure improvements that are happening and talking to them about what the issues are. It may be in the woods, there are very few sidewalks. And it may be when we go and talk to those residents, as a group, they collectively say, there's 10 miles of sidewalks missing here and we want none of them. We love the way it is. We do want to improve our park and we're willing to put some skin in the game and work with the city on a park enhancement. And how would that fit in everybody? So, that's what I envision, a lot of talking, but not a lot of horse trading.
Okay, so?
Got that. So, we will amend, revise the response and we will be more clear that the intent is for staff to go out into each neighborhood and have those conversations about priorities.
So, let me?
Absolutely.
All right, thanks. And I'm going to open up the rest of, any questions, starting with Josh?
Thanks, Paul. So, I had nothing to do with this goal, but as I'm listening to the conversation, a couple of questions or issues came to mind that I would hope to get information or clarification on before the retreat. So, the first one is the concept of a neighborhood. And I know Section 1A of the goal talks about identifying the neighborhoods. And, you know, as I'm listening to the conversation, you know, Tola, you mentioned Talis. Then you also mentioned your neighborhood, the area where you live, versus, you know, Forest Rim. And, you know, you could look at it on the spectrum between the entire corporate boundaries of the city and one individual subdivision. Where does a neighborhood lie within that scope? Because someone could look at Squawk Mountain and say, Squawk Mountain is a neighborhood within the city. It's a very large neighborhood, just as the Highlands is a neighborhood. But, you know, if you live in the Highlands, there are multiple neighborhoods within the Highlands. And so, and the same thing holds true with Talis. You know, the interests of the folks in the bridges may be very different than the folks who live in Hawks Ridge on the other side of Talis Drive. So, you know, I think as part of this, that definitional aspect, then there's also layers of involvement. So, are we looking at, you know, going from simply the city coming out and saying, here's the things we're interested in doing in your neighborhood, whatever that constitutes, to some form of community councils, like these Bellevue Community Council has been very powerful over the decades. Are we looking at something, I used to be the chair of something when I lived in Bellevue that was called the Bellevue Neighborhood Network. And this was a group of folks who would get together and then sort of be an intermediary.
So, what's your clarification you're asking for?
Well, what I'm looking for is more detail on what it is we're talking about here in terms of neighborhood outreach. I don't understand what the neighborhoods are and I don't understand what the outreach itself constitutes. And then, that feeds into my last issue and concern, which was this FTE that was brought up by the city because I don't understand $115,000 for a full-time FTE. I don't really understand what we get for that if it's just the city coming out to an open house. I'm just looking for more detail on exactly what the plan is here. And I'm not sure I quite understood. I like the idea. I just need a little more detail understanding what it is in the implementation.
First, Tom?
Okay. So, we don't, it just makes, we're just looking for clarification.
Clarification.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I expect the estimated cost might look a little bit different once staff understands what we were talking about. I have, I have questions about line items within this estimated cost, but in the spirit of allowing staff to go back and take a look at this a little further, I will, I will wait to give those comments till later.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have questions or comments for clarification?
My intention in writing it was that a neighborhood defines itself. And so, if Talis wants to tell the city that our homeowners association would like to do it or we'd like to have Talis east and west, I just think that's whatever it is. I don't think we're putting a limit on the number of neighborhoods that we have or, you know, calling Squawk Mountain a neighborhood. I think that's organic and we will see what comes out of it. But when Bellevue did it, they had originally started off with a subarea plan for each, each neighborhood was whatever the subarea plan was. And they said, well, that fell apart in about five minutes. So, that has to, that has to be worked out. And what was your second part is, are we looking at setting up neighborhood councils?
So?
In my mind, that wasn't in here. What's in here is an initial, go out into the neighborhood, staff and electeds, talk about what we're going to do, talk about what they'd like. And it doesn't go, it doesn't go any deeper than that right now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sorry. I promise.
You have two tokens left.
I am cautious and a little concerned about this bringing up of next door. I think there's a lot of perils inherent to trying to respond to a private communication channel. To me, it's like trying to respond to Twitter or Facebook or some of the other social media tools that we don't have control over the dialogue. I think you could get in a situation where it would be very easy?
So, you understand the count, the staff's mention of that and we can debate whether that's right or not during the retreat?
Fair enough. If it's still in there, we can have a conversation back.
Thank you.
Can you use a token for that?
Sounds like it.
Yeah, so this is clarification understanding. And, and did they get it? Do we have anything that needs to be going back to help them with their follow-up? Thank you. So, I'm going to move us on to the next goal, which is public engagement. And this comes from Councilmember Milligan. And who is leading this one? Autumn?
So, this goal was increase the quality and volume of public engagement in city processes and decision-making. And so, our communications team met with Councilmember Milligan and talked through, she kind of divided it into four sections, so I'll, I'll go through each section. The first is enhancing our website. We have a few projects in the works for 2015 to enhance our site. The first is to provide direct links to upcoming agendas on the city council page, on the boards and commission pages, and on the council committee pages. And when you click on it, there'll be an enhanced view of your agenda with links to the minutes and the video. So, it's coming soon. We're really excited about that. The second is we're enhancing our search engine to include summary sheets following each council meeting. So, this will allow people to search by agenda bill to track legislation. And then, third, we are doing a redesign of our existing website in 2016. It's provided by our vendor for free to do a refresh of our site. So, we'll have a new look and we'll take that opportunity to make some changes to the way the site is, is built and kind of structured. We also may consider some additional enhancements in 2016, such as responsive design for our website that may include some other costs. And throughout this process, we'll be monitoring the analytics, which Nina had brought up in her goal. And I provided a few just, just from some perspective. So, our website is, the vast majority of our users are coming to our site for customer service needs. And I listed out, it's people who generally are wanting to sign up for a Parks and Rec program, get married here, find out who's in jail. It's, it's the day-to-day customer service that we provide as a city. And then, I thought this was interesting, our most common search terms are the farmer's market, jail, pickering barn, passports, jobs, basketball, gliders, Costco, and pool. So, it gives you some perspective of what our, what our customers are looking for and what items we really want to promote and make it easy to find on the front of our website. So, that's our website. Secondly, was formalizing a process for public notice. So, our communications team customizes outreach depending on the topic and the impact to our community and our audience. So, for example, the BNO tax initiative, that was extensive. That included open houses, direct mail, email, social media, partnerships with the chamber, plenty more. We also look at really major initiatives and make sure they have their own section on our website that includes their own calendar. That way, we can collect all of the council committee meetings or the board and commission meetings into one spot so someone can follow the process from beginning to end. So, other initiatives that may not warrant such an extensive effort. So, if we were to standardize our outreach, that really would restrict our flexibility and how we cater our communications. After speaking with Councilmember Milligan, you know, one action item could be that we share our communication plans with the council before any major initiative so you know what we're doing. The third was improving the public hearing process. So, public hearings and noticing requirements really vary depending on the purpose. Some are required by the state, others aren't. If we were to implement new requirements for public hearings, that could limit the city's flexibility on taking action on certain items, especially those that are really time-sensitive. If you open a hearing and you feel like you're not ready to make a decision on something, you can always make a motion to continue the hearing to a date and time certain. So, there is some flexibility in the sense of what's already set up if you want to, to routinely wait and think about an issue before voting on it. If there is a desire to change our public hearing process, that would require some considerable research and review to, to really think through what the next steps would be. One other thing that we talked about in our meeting with, with Councilmember Milligan was if, if the goal is to include the community earlier in the legislative process, the city could start hosting all of its council committee meetings in this room and we could televise them live and broadcast them. So, that is one option. And then, the fourth was making public input seen by all. And this really spoke to me, to social media, that communications and that dialogue is happening with our community members on a daily basis online. Last time that we were here talking about social media, you know, the next step was making sure that the decision-makers saw that conversation happening. We did start creating some reports called what's trending that we were sending to council members. It did take a lot of time for us to aggregate that information. So, you know, I'd be really curious and would welcome some feedback on whether that tool was useful for you or not, or if there's other ways we can provide you that input. We are also researching a few other ideas. One is, is there a way that we can Skype public comment during council meetings or present some pre-recorded messages? So, we have some other ideas on how we could better include people in the process without having to require them to drive down and speak in front of you. So?
All right, thank you. Nina, do you have anything to, statement to make or any comments about their response?
Thank you. And thank you, Autumn, for the thorough response. And I love that last idea, being a fan of radio. You know, I'm thinking of that radio show where they have the call-in, you leave a voicemail and then they play those in series. Wouldn't that be great? I don't know, but we'll talk about that at the retreat. I want to, at this point, emphasize the word engagement. And I love your response, everything is great, but for our consideration between now and the, and the, and the goal-setting retreat and what can we be doing, what would really engage people? And some of what I may have led you to respond is, is more about how we inform our public, but I want to dial in on what really engages them. And that's where I thought that the, the structure of our public notice and public hearing, to consider how that works. And I have an example to explain to you right now. One is, is the, what were we just doing? Comprehensive plan. On March 16th, the comprehensive plan came through our packet. I don't know if you looked at it, but it was in the, it was in our packet and it was in the consent calendar. And then, it goes out to the committees, which is kind of under the table a little bit, not, not in a bad way, but the public doesn't see it much. I love your idea of being able to have our committees have more visibility. And then, it comes back and then we have a PowerPoint presentation that walks us through and sets us up for, I've already spent weeks agonizing over this. And so, if it's hard for me, it must be very hard for the public. So, I'm looking at what structural change would have had that PowerPoint presentation we got tonight back when the comp plan amendments first came to the council. Is there something? And maybe that's in the communication plan? I'll have one question for Autumn. If you don't have the answer now, it might be just something you get ready for the retreat. Do you have, and you refer to sharing your communication plan with the council. Is there, is there something that's laid out? Is there a structure to that? Is it a document? Do you have an if-this, then-that kind of thing?
No. Typically, it's, it's a lot of discussion first within our communications team. It's feedback from administration. It's, a lot of times, we know that a comp plan update's a pretty big deal. So, yes, there's a webpage and yes, we're tracking, you know, if you go to our website now and you go to comp plan, there's a separate calendar and you can track all of the meetings that were listed out that Trish was talking about tonight. So, there is a way to track it through that process if someone's that interested. Depends on the, the level of how much people really want to be engaged in that process. So, we have, we've broken out those steps and that was something we've talked about in the past few years, is making sure that we spell that process out, because it's a complicated one from start to finish for the members of the public, to go all the way through. So, we make sure that, you know, we, we can list it out as far as what a description is on the project. Here's how you can get involved. Here's the person you can call for more information. Here's all the public meetings you can come to. So, so we've, we've done that, but only for really top-level initiatives. And it's things that, that we think that are some of the most important, some that are taking up a lot of your time or that will generate a lot of interest from the public too.
I'm just thinking that maybe that would be an interesting tool to be, to learn about, is that if, if it's a big project, then what steps does it go through? That's it.
Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. So, I'm going to take this opportunity to just revisit the process here tonight. So, let's get a summary. Let's, and we're going to, we're going to have a goal introduced. I'm going to ask if, if it's possible for staff to think on their feet and maybe summarize their responses that we're getting. It's easy to get into deliberation. I want to make sure we understand. I want to make sure we're clear. And if part of, and some of the comments do help with clarity and I, and I appreciate that, sometimes it, it's hard for me to tell. But I'm going to really try to, I'm going to manage this even, just like I did with Tola. Tola, we can discuss that at a retreat, right? I'm going to, I might say something like that.
Fair enough.
Right? And it's just because I'm sensing that we're getting into deliberation beyond clarity. And that's the purpose for tonight. So, thank you. So, Charlie, you're going to be there first trial.
Warmed up on the comp plan this evening, so we'll see if I'm still warm. Okay, so we combined a couple of council goal responses together into one response. And the first council goal was Councilmember Scher's goal on increasing communication with this school district regarding growth. There were really two main themes embedded within that, which was awareness by the school district of growth that's planned by the city and coordination between the two local governments in managing and working through that growth so that both can be successful. Under action items, there was reference to two main things. One was making sure there was a shared understanding between both local governments and then also developing joint planning and strategies between those local governments. And then, also, I had Councilmember Milligan's goal about citing new schools within the city limits. And so, that one focused more on strategies and policies and creating teams and collaboration with our school district to make sure that we cited, or they cited, but we helped them cite new schools in the right locations where growth was planned in our community. And it focused on identifying the costs involved in that, the benefits of doing that, looking at a range of innovative solutions, so really collaborating on finding the best ways to do that. And then, trying to embed that within our permitting process and with our normal processes that we go through in, in. that we go through in development to make sure that we're considering impacts to the school district as a matter of course. And so with that, I'll cover the goal response.
Summarize.
Doing okay so far? I will summarize as best I can. All right. So in the first section, we took on Councilmember Scher's goal, and that really focused on developing regular meetings with the school district a couple times a year. These meetings would focus upon projects, active projects by the school district, projects the city was permitting, forecast by both agencies, our growth targets and how we're doing on those, how we're doing on central plan implementation, and there would be additional meetings as needed. There would also be a report. We have an active projects list. We'd encourage the school district to engage on us more with that, and then issue a transactional report every 12 months that would go through more of our active projects, how we're doing with housing units coming online and impact fees that have been collected for the school district. The second portion of our goal response was about citing new schools in city limits. And in that, we really focused upon a symposium that the city would put together in partnership with the school district, although we would be the primary hosts of that. Would involve a variety of departments in the city that had engagement with the school district, and we would engage consultants, experts in urban land and school planning with a focus on, in particular, urban school models. And we would answer questions, work through these things. We believe the result of the symposium would be joint planning and strategies with the school district that would likely get us to better outcomes in the future. With that, we proposed about $8,000, although the cost is flexible, and up to 250 hours of staff time, and that's the summary of our response.
Okay, Josh, I'll start with you.
You know, Paul, I really commend staff for coming up with more detail on what was a fairly broad goal. And so these are really great suggestions for things that can be done. I hadn't gotten into this level of detail in terms of the approach to be taken. So, you know, these are all great ideas that I think would ultimately satisfy the goal if they came to fruition. And Nina and I did not coordinate on these at all, so it sort of came to these independently.
All right, thank you. Nina?
Thank you, and thanks for your response. I think this is an interesting way to approach it, and it provides part of what I was hoping for, and maybe, I, I think if the response discussed more about how to get to the solutions, I think the symposium is part of the way there. Just hoping for something less just information and more some real thing, you know? A real policy would come out of this, a real incentive would come out of this or something. And maybe there needs to be a little more definition for that, but that's something we can workshop. Or you could bring me some more ideas? Charlie?
Thank you.
Does anybody, Tola?
So one of the weird things about Western Washington is cities are required by the King County planning policies to engage school districts. School districts are actually not required to engage cities. So my question is, has this response been crafted in cooperation with the school district? Specifically, Steve, who's the facilities guy over there? Steve Crawford, thank you.
It has not.
And I suggest that before...
Absolutely, absolutely. I think part of this was making sure that we were on track with what was desired. And certainly, it's blatantly obvious we would need their cooperation to pull it off. So if they're, if we're on track, we'll begin talking with them and see if there are ways to tweak this. Knowing that our council wanted to do something, we've put a proposal forward and we can get that discussion started now.
Thank you.
And I just would ask that you, if you have conversations with them, that this is proposed action? This is going to be deliberated and selected or not? It's not firm action yet? Okay. Any other questions or comments for clarification? Okay, thank you. Next.
I had Councilmember Scher's goal on complete streets. The title of it is increase complete streets funding in 2016. Fund the complete street program as it is planned for in the capital facilities plan. And the action items is to include $670,000 in funding for next year. Consider it, provide the infrastructure committee possible potential projects, commence work on the projects, not reallocate the funding to larger TIP programs, and then reevaluate in 2017. This goal is one of the challenges. That's an old goal for almost every community in the United States is infrastructure. We have limited resources, and so it's a matter of choices on how we can best spend the money. In the past, we use our REIT II, our real estate excise tax II, to fund anything that is related to street construction projects. Historically, it was running around a million dollars. In 2015, because we had an opportunity to seek grants, we reallocated that funding from complete streets and included it as part of a larger project. So one of the potential downsides of this is we would lose potential opportunities for grant funding when there is like an 80% match to a grant that we might need to do. One of the other things, it's, there's another option. Property, adjoining property owners, particularly on sidewalks, have an obligation in developing the sidewalks. There are many cities in the state of Washington that do a matching grant program. For instance, what they do is the council allocate some number, and I just use $50,000 a year. And then people can sign up and do a matching program and complete some of their infield and sidewalks. Another option is to look at additional funding for transportation benefit districts, so we would have an opportunity to avail our sales to grants. We could use a portion of our real estate excise tax, which we currently use on the pavement management system. And if this was a higher priority, we could reallocate funding from REIT I to the complete streets. And although it is only a one-time fix each year, we could use some of our under-reserved ending fund cash balance in the general fund. The amount anticipated is $670,000 in 2016 and $697,000 in 2017.
Okay, thank you, Josh.
Thank you. So there were a couple of things that I was hoping to get out of this that I didn't see. You know, this talks about the revenue side of it, and I specifically avoided talking about where the funds would come from because I would defer to Diane and her team on what would be the appropriate place for the funds to come from in the budget. But I guess what I don't know the answer to is, on the expenditure side, what are we deficient on? So, you know, my section on why this goal talks about all the things that complete streets fund, plus the potential for ADA-compliant road-related improvements, which, actually, I recall from last year's budget, Paul, you talked about, you know, we're going to need to really catch up on those at some point. And it would be great to get an assessment as we go into the retreat of, sort of like we did for the pavement, you know, what is our expected level of service for complete streets? What are we deficient on? You know, what is this kind of money going to get us towards? Because this is an annual program. And so that information, I think, could be really helpful so that we understand $670,000 is really, I think, anecdotally, it's a very small drop in the bucket of the overall scope of what we need to fix around the city. But that piece of information's not there. So that was part of it. And then the other part was just on the, oh, where was it? Grant funding and the grant matching and so forth. I guess I'm not quite clear on understanding, maybe it has to do with where you would take the funding sources from, but I don't understand what in 2016 we might go out and seek grants for that allocating these funds for these types of this program would cause us to potentially not get in terms of a grant? So I don't know what's in the pipeline for 2016 that, do you see what I'm getting at, Diane?
Yeah, you're looking at what are some opportunities in the future for grant funding that potentially the council would have to make some decisions on, whether they want to spend it on A, or B, or C, or D.
Right. And I'm not asking you to go out any further really than 2016 at this point, because, you know, we don't want to get into the crystal ball. But since the comment was made that, you know, we might lose that, we'd have that opportunity cost, I guess I would want to know what is the opportunity cost for 2016 especially? And then maybe we can look at changing that number or adjusting that number appropriately depending on what options are out there. So those would be the two things.
Thank you. Eileen, do you have anything to add?
I think Josh covered most everything. For me, in addition to that, would be understanding the deficiencies. So do we have an inventory of the deficiencies that are out there? So as we do begin to do some prioritization, that we know where some probably more important pieces are than others. Okay, thank you.
Any questions or clarification required from other council members for this goal and the staff's response? Okay, not seeing any? Thank you. We'll move on.
Great. And then Brett is going to present on emergency management.
Good evening. Okay, I'm here to talk about the emergency management investments. And this goal has five action items, a written assessment of environmental dangers in the city, public engagement in that assessment process, identifying neighborhood leaders that could be contacting emergencies, sharing the assessment information with the public and businesses, and then investments in emergency management, disaster preparedness measures. And summarize the response. The city has a hazard mitigation plan and a comprehensive emergency management plan. Now, those are all hazard plans. The hazard mitigation plan includes hazard identification for the city of Iwauqua. So it identifies landslides, you know, other hazards within the city. What we understand this goal is looking for is what we would call scenario plan, a scenario planning level, where we're looking at something like a landslide happens in a neighborhood, what's the response to that particular event? We have a wildland urban interface fire, what's the response to that event in a particular area if possible? Some events, earthquakes, volcano, et cetera, those are citywide. Some of them are more neighborhood-specific. So that's kind of the understanding that we're looking at here. And, you know, our planning level estimate is 300-plus hours probably per scenario to be able to put that type of plan together. So that's action item number one. Action items two and four, we lumped together because they really deal with outreach and communication. Interesting thing is, during the hazard mitigation plan process, that does involve public input, which we receive very, very little of. It's difficult to get public input on emergency management unless an event has happened. And we actually try and leverage that to the extent that we can. We are involved in a number of community events. We also work with the Iwauqua Citizen Corps, and they're very active as well. We have the Map Your Neighborhood program, the Community Emergency Response Team training, those things going on. So there's a number of ways that we're engaging, mostly with a preparedness message right now. Getting engagement on the scenario planning will take some effort and some work, just based on past experiences we've had with trying to engage the public on emergency management issues. The action item number three talks about community leaders. We think the CERT and the Map Your Neighborhood programs are great starting points for that. If there's additional thoughts, please let us know. But those are, we already have well over 500 people that have been through the Community Emergency Response Team training, plus the Map Your Neighborhood. So there's quite a good base there started already. And action item number five, as the planning goes forward, we already have capital items identified in the comprehensive, in the capital financial facilities plan. Likely identify other capital items, possibly code changes, process changes, things like that, as we do some more detailed analysis. So that's our understanding of the goal.
Josh?
So I think actually the neighborhood engagement may fit in really nicely with one of the goals we talked about earlier in terms of reaching out to people in a particular neighborhood and discussing any concerns, you know, that they might have, whether it's fire, or flood, or earthquake, et cetera. You know, that could actually be one of the types of topics to go out to people with. The ultimate idea here, it's not so much a clarification, because Brett and I spoke about this on the phone, is more to try to convey my understanding of what I was getting at here to all of you. Because I wrote this sort of broadly. I'm going to send you at the end of the meeting a couple of web links. One is to an outstanding page on the City of Seattle's website where they have various types of hazard information. And it goes through earthquake, landslide, active shooter incidents, power outages. I mean, it's a list of like 20 things here. And then there's a section that talks about key points, and then there's a link, and it takes you to a great report for each of these types of emergencies that the City of Seattle has put together, and it's called an Identification and Vulnerability Analysis. And, you know, the earthquake one, for instance, it has a map of the City of Seattle, and it tells you where in the city, historically, there have been specific points, you know, that have been problems in the past, based on past data. So what I'm getting at with this goal ultimately, so that everyone understands, is it is scenario-based planning. The idea is to look at parts of the city that are at risk for certain types of emergency scenarios, which ultimately will lead into better code decision-making and better capital planning. Because if we know that we're at risk, say, for a forest fire in a particular neighborhood, and perhaps there's a capital improvement that could help mitigate that risk, we want to build that into our CFP. So that's the ultimate outcome that this goal is designed to achieve. So hopefully, that explains a little bit more than just the words I put on paper. So, you know, I can continue to work with Brett before the retreat in terms of further refining some of the details here, because I think the way I crafted it, it was pretty broad, but as we spoke, we got to be on the same page about really what I was driving at here.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments? So I actually do have one. And I don't know if it's in here. It's tough for me, I'm not that familiar, but I did do some reading on this topic, and there was a, one of the city magazines that we got, a whole issue that was dedicated to this. And there was an article about the Carlton Complex fire, which really highlighted it wasn't the necessary response at the time of the emergency, but it was a long period of time in recovery and making sure that they followed processes and procedures to make sure that they were, remained eligible for federal grants for recovery. And I don't know if this plan as proposed here or envisioned in your response or in the request has, would address policies on how we would actually prepare for, or would that long-term response after a disaster. I don't know if that's included in here, but it was clearly a key part of the Carlton Complex fire long-term response.
It's not included in our current response. That's a recovery, it sounds like you're referring to a recovery plan. And that's a separate, that's different than the scenario planning.
Okay, okay. So I just learned from that article that that was a very, very critical way for the community to maximize all the resources available to them, especially at the federal level. So I would think, I would hope that as we considered such a thing, a plan, that I could have information like that to consider as part of the goal. Anybody else? Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
I'll try and be succinct, because I know you've got a lot more goals to try and cover this evening. The next one is a focus on green building innovation. And the description of the goal was to create incentives for and encourage the use of innovative green building development and redevelopment, meaning example, materials, roofs, and lighting. And in our goal response, we gave some background and some history on the city's work on green building. The purpose was just to explain, there is a pretty extensive history, a history that the city should be proud of, where the city's done a number of things, been a leader both locally and nationally, made a number of achievements, and we also at the same time know that there are some also equally ambitious goals that we're also trying to achieve, whether it be related to waste, or climate, or energy, and some of those other topics. So a lot of the goal response talks about the history. There's an attachment that goes through about 20 years of history that the city has undertaken through various policies, initiatives, as well as through our urban villages, as well as our current development agreements as examples. The staff response proposes an approach which would take a look at and confirm the short-term and long-term goals and the areas for focus within the green building. The green building encompasses a lot of different fields, so the innovation can happen in a lot of different areas. So we'd want to be really specific about what we're trying to achieve in the short and long term and in articulating those. Then we'd follow an approach where essentially we'd be looking at some of the best practices and leading practices around sustainable building, as well as some of the conditions that would be necessary for innovation. There's, you know, some interesting work that's been done by the Harvard Kennedy School, for example, on conditions for innovation, and we'd want to make sure that if we're truly looking for innovation, that we have some of those pieces in place. So we would do that work. We'd also look specifically at local Isaguas projects, so that we could have some more tangible and specific things where we could try and take advantage of opportunities to spur projects, whether on city-owned properties or in partnership with private development. And then we would also want to engage with the development community and local residents as we move down the road to get some feedback about the different options and which ones are demanded and could be the most successful in aligning some of those strategies. And then finally, we would assemble those into an action plan, which would outline specifics about targeted audiences, proposed actions that could be acted upon and pursued for future years.
Thank you. Josh?
So again, great, great response with very specific measurable deliverables that staff can provide. And, you know, we touched on this a little bit at the Infrastructure Committee meeting when we talked about the comp plan, and I mentioned taking a more aggressive approach and being innovative when it comes to sustainability, and going above and beyond just what the basic county or state code requires, but really being true leaders in this area, whether it be on climate change issues or environmental sustainability generally. And so this type of plan, I think, is really a good measurable way to look at how we can take that leadership role and go above and beyond on this particular topic and move forward. And it looks like, you know, in terms of cost, that's just pretty much the consulting costs, I think, and the staff time for working on this.
That's correct.
Okay, so any questions for clarification for Josh or for staff?
I think the one thing I'll just add real quickly is, is one of the things I was hoping to look at here on innovative is looking at what other, not just other jurisdictions within the region have done, but even going beyond that to really explore ideas, not even from maybe within the United States, but just things that we can look at to really be true innovators in our community. And it's one of the things that I think is always a value of bringing in outside ideas. You know, it was one of the things I really liked when Bob got hired, you know, coming from Ohio and just not having sort of entrenched ideas about what the region already believes is appropriate, you know, for certain things. To have new outside ideas coming into our city really refreshes us and revitalizes us. So that's the sort of approach I think we can take with this idea.
Okay. Naina?
Josh, I was wondering if you got, in your ask about defining your goal, you talked about incentives, and you also talked about redevelopment. Do you think that you got the information that would help in those regards?
I guess I'd have to point back to David in terms of whether these things would, my assumption was that all these reports and activities would lead us to look at that, because we talked in the central area plan about green building incentives and code amendments and things that we could do, and that was, that piece was a nod to that, because I don't think we really quite got there in the central area plan, at least as far as I would have liked to have seen us gone. You know, the density bonus wasn't tied to environmental sustainability, which I thought was a missing piece. So these were ways that we could look into those sort of issues over the next few years.
And the approach to the work, as we clarify some of the goals, could incorporate a mix of things. Sometimes there are requirements that tie to incentives, and they kind of work as a system, so that could be certainly a part of the approach to the work.
We've talked about fee-bates and carrot-and-stick-type incentives, and I think there were some jurisdictions we looked at when we were doing the central area plan that had, you put money into a pot, so...
So, I'm just trying to answer your question, yeah.
So as long as you feel you've got enough to work with.
Sure.
Okay.
All right. If there are any other comments, thank you. Thank you, David. We have three more, and five minutes for the original schedule. We're doing really good. Thank you.
So this goal is conducting a transportation-specific study. So in response to this goal, staff would meet with CIC to develop the survey questions, and then there's several options for how to conduct a survey. One is, we could put something on our website, do a lot of outreach about people's, any comments. We would have a final product, it would be raw data, which we could then hire someone to help us analyze or find it as a report. Or we could have the survey managed by an outside firm, similar to our recent community survey, and that cost would be about $15,000. The CIC should also discuss the timing for a survey, along with the development of the transportation funding strategy goal, which you'll hear about in a moment. And it's important to note that feedback would also be, need to be compared and integrated within the city's TIP and the concurrency update. So with that.
Josh?
So this came out of the Infrastructure Committee when Mary Lou Naina and I were on the committee, and we actually volunteered, the three of us, to come up with the list of questions and really reduce the amount of staff time and costs that would be necessary to get this done. And I think we even started developing some questions before the committees turned over at the beginning of this year. And so we were kind of on our way to working towards this. And so the idea of this goal was really to continue that effort and to work with staff on how to get those questions and that information out to the public. And I don't think we really, correct me if I'm wrong, contemplated a very formal type of survey. It was really a means of us gathering information on points of concern to the community that we could use in our planning efforts on transportation. So that's kind of where this came from, and I think, Naina, you co-authored it with me as well.
Yeah, the survey, you know, we keep using this word, but I'm trying to find, I'm trying to think of a better one right now that might inspire something more. It was more of an invitation, rather than, you know, lots of times surveys inform and then draw information from the recipient. And we wanted to invite people to say something and to get something that we never even asked for. That's what we were hoping the survey would do. Survey, see there, I go again. You evolve into this trap of calling it a survey, and I think that limits its thing. So I don't know, this kind of talks around it enough to give some structure about what could be done and what we could discuss at the work at the retreat. So I'm okay right now. I'm just looking forward to talking about it more.
Okay. Any questions for clarification or more information? Tola?
So, I said it before, and everybody thought it was a goofy idea, but I'll ask again, because I don't think it's a goofy idea. Have we talked to Google about whether they make their traffic data available either as a purchasable product from Google or elsewhere? I mean, they have it all, and they have, they have trend data over time. And it seems like if that's a commercial project that, product that would be available, that could help inform a traffic survey, because it's all, you know, it's all, they get it all from real users. So, the answer, I mean, it may be a five-minute phone call, and they may say no, but it'd be interesting to know.
Thanks. All right, thank you. Okay, thank you. I think we have two more.
Okay, we also had a goal proposal to create a regional agenda, and the purpose of that was to be more successful at achieving the city's vision and our goals for the community, and also to be a contributing member of our region. The intent was to create a regional agenda that would make good use of our limited resources and help us to focus on the most important issues for our community, and to act then according to a clear set of priorities. This goal was a goal that was also one of our emerging issues. We made a similar proposal during that presentation, and our implementation plan was very similar to the action items that were listed in this goal proposal. And that included identifying the organizations we would engage with, communicate our objectives and the timelines for those regional objectives, and then providing a framework for action that would describe which appointments we should focus on, which meetings we should attend, who we should engage with, and what activities or joint meetings we should try to coordinate. And then lastly, the final action item that was listed here is to create a policy that requires that that agenda be updated and adopted on an annual basis. So our response is that we would certainly go ahead and prepare those, those action items. I think in our emerging issues presentation, we had proposed to do the same. And so those first two action items of identifying who we should engage with and to develop a plan to communicate our objectives and the timelines for that engagement, be something that we could easily complete, I believe. The third action item about developing the framework for that engagement and actually a plan for how we would carry it out, would require a little bit more time, and that's where we have proposed a couple of options for council to consider and to provide feedback on. One would be that our current staff could absorb that additional workload. A second would be to hire an employee that would be very focused on carrying out that regional agenda. We would still envision, of course, that that employee would engage with existing employees that are more subject matter experts, where necessary, but that individual would help to attend meetings that we had identified. They review the agenda, and we also propose that there might be some additional benefit for that FTE to help put together our legislative priorities, track the legislative session, and coordinate our response to proposed bills. And then lastly, the final action item would be to just update that agenda on an annual basis, and we've laid out a proposal on how we would do that. First, walking council leadership through it, and then ultimately having council approve it at a, at a regular meeting. We've identified some costs, the range of costs that would be included with carrying out the regional agenda, and in the future, there may be some additional costs just for meeting attendance and things like that.
Okay, thank you. So I'll, so no surprise, I think what's clear to me at least, Stacy and I, who we conferred on this, haven't talked about yours, the staff's response, but it's clear to me that there's an accurate understanding of the intent. So I don't have any requests for more information or clarification, so I think the response is pretty good. I think for the, for the rest of my council members, I would just say that, you know, this is my fourth year on council. During my first year, I got to be alternative to that PIC, and really had my eyes opened up to kind of the regional level discussion on issues and how we participated or maybe didn't participate. And then the last two, as President, actually helping guide the, the, both not only our city council committees, but regional assignments and boards and commissions, though, of course, many of you individuals have applied for, but there's also, you know, some that was also suggested. And it just became very, very clear, has become clear to me, that, that rather than kind of accidental and reformed every year, that kind of formalizing a regional agenda to guide our participation regionally for the best outcome for our citizens, not only near term but long term. So that was the motivation, and I think, again, as you've captured the response, I'm satisfied with that. Stacy, I don't know if you had anything more to add?
I would echo all of your comments. I think the additional comment I would have is that the response sort of implies that maybe an employee would be doing the, as least as I read, it's possible to imply that a new employee would be attending all of these meetings. And I think the intent would be that this would help, the regional agenda would, it would be a strategy for how the city uses its resources. And those resources include every member of the city council, and so would help inform, as Paul sort of alluded to a moment ago, the annual appointments to different committees. So I just wanted to make sure that it's understood that I didn't see an employee taking over all of those meeting responsibilities, or the majority of them.
Understood. I think as we tried to describe the implementation, we just put a little nod to that, that the 2017 appointments would be part of the way that we would implement the regional agenda. And no, it's probably not even physically possible for one person to get to everything.
Sure. Bob?
I just, just wanted to add, I understand what you're saying. I think, so part of the goal is thinking about the conversation you'll have on the sixth, and you can, you know, a regional agenda can be a whole rainbow of potential items from just, you know, the annual appointments that the council makes every year to, like, if you want a full-blown, you know, support system in place. So when our PIC, I'm looking at Tola right now, but our PIC person attends that, they actually have some policy support going and attending those meetings, and there's some analysis that gets done to help prep the council member in advance of that. I know we did that, we tried to do that, and when Fred served on the council as, with transportation, we set up a transportation mobility team and tried to provide him with some, you know, reports in advance of some of those meetings. So if we're going to do that, you know, at that spectrum, then you're going to need some staffing involved. If it's just, you know, conversation before we do the annual appointments, then it's obviously at the lower end of the spectrum.
All right, thanks for that, Claire.
So, so I want to make sure, it's not like I'm disagreeing or thinking you missed the mark, or saying that I don't under, I understand that there's the, I understand that completeness and fullness of the response. I just wanted to make sure that if somebody's reading the response, that they also look, it's noted here that we talked about, I don't know how I'm saying this right, I just want to make sure it doesn't, it wasn't proposed as necessarily hiring a full-time employee. That wasn't necessarily how it was proposed. Sure.
Tola?
I just want to point out that in the, in the spectrum of potential responses to this, there is sort of a middle ground. I would say, from being lucky enough to be on PIC now for, for five years, I think of Auburn, Renton, Redmond, Kirkland, they all occasionally send staffers, basically based on the issue, right? So if you had a staffer, like, I try to forward things that are of interest to the council to the council, but, you know, if there was a staffer who also kept an eye and said, oh, you know, I'm going to attend this one, or attend that one. It wouldn't have to be attend every single meeting, but it could be as issues arise. Thanks.
So you're asking then maybe that be incorporated as a possibility in the response, or is it already incorporated?
I don't know if it's already incorporated, but I think it should be if it's not.
Okay, thank you. Josh?
I think Bob addressed it. You know, he got all the way from, we have an agenda and to, and we think about that cognizant of it, to we make it a really much bigger thing, and we hire somebody full-time.
Josh?
Did you want to follow, Tola?
Just to finish the thought, I just, you know, I just want to make sure it's, that we don't set up a straw man that says, well, we'd have to have some, you know, we'd have to have five people who'd go to every single committee, because there's a, it's a, it's not a discontinuous function, it's a continuous function. Thanks.
That's the first time contiguous function's ever been That's the first time contiguous function's ever been said in this room. Go ahead, Josh.
I wish I had a team to help me put the ETP agenda together, so, throw that out there. So, I'm, I'm struggling with trying to understand who our audience is for this regional agenda. Is, is it ourselves? Are we going to use that to better coordinate with other agencies and jurisdictions? When I look at the comp plan references in the goal, it lists in the regional coordination policies lots of different agencies and jurisdictions. You know, we do meet with some Amish ever so often. I don't think we've met with Bellevue since I've been on the council. We get, you know, communication with Sound Transit, you know, through Fred's service on the board. So, we have those connections. I'm just trying to understand, you know, we have a legislative agenda, and our audience is clearly lobbying our legislators in Olympia. A regional agenda, and I'm glad you brought up the hiring someone because that kind of freaked me out, but, you know, let's say we put this together and not have to hire an employee for $120,000. Well, what do we do with this? And that's the piece I didn't understand, and I don't know if it's the staff response or just the goal itself that I'm not quite understanding, but I just want to figure out as we get to the retreat what the ultimate use of this document or planning tool will be so that I can better understand how this differs from our legislative agenda or the efforts that we already undertake as a city, various meetings and dinners and things like that that we do. So, I just want to understand that better, and you don't have to sell me on it tonight, I'm just missing that, that piece.
No, no, I think it's a fair question on audience, and I think that's a, it's a really insightful question as well because though we use the word agenda, and it's easy to think about legislative agenda where the audience is very clear, you know, this, I think, was intended to be that and then some because the county council could, for example, could be the subject of an agenda. But at the same time, there are many ways that we participate in discussions with other regional players, and what is the policy? And did we, did we just show up prepared accidentally? Or did we, or, or was that identified as a priority and when we actually assigned somebody to that? And I think, I'll give you another, so, so, to me, so in that case, then we are the audience for that as well. And then one other, other type of element to admit for me was the, you know, Bob mentioned Fred's work in transportation already. Well, you know, especially at that large regional level, I'm not, do we actually have the right coverage and strategy and succession planning for transportation? So, it's to ask that question as well. So, that's, again, that's that kind of that policy development. So, just hope that healthfully answers your question.
It points me in the right direction. I maybe just like to see it in writing or a little more detail describing that. That does, it does help.
I'll have more to share with you at the retreat. I don't know if you had any more? Anything else on this one? Okay. One last item.
Great. So, last goal is about transportation funding, and the purpose of the goal was to develop a strategy for raising the funds that are needed to implement our transportation concurrency plan and raise the possibility of vote of the people being necessary in order to provide for a particular funding source. The action items in this goal were to create a draft strategy that identifies plausible funding scenarios, to assemble a stakeholders committee to review the draft strategy and make a recommendation to the city council in time to take action by the end of 2015. In our staff response, we made a case for why the time is now to act and that we believe we've developed both as staff and as council and might even say, the public has developed some clarity about what must be done, when it must be done. We spent a great deal of time over the last few years developing plans and policies, strategies, concurrency being one of those, our by-ped plan being another. And we've also described the magnitude of projects that need to be complete, completed, and the financial commitment that we will need to make. The piece that has not yet been formed is how to provide the public funding to complete that plan. We currently have a goal of developing the mobility master plan. We have an allocation set aside to help us carry out that goal. And as staff has and administration have spent more time talking with council committees and with council leadership, we now believe that we have completed the most important, most significant parts of that plan, even though we haven't put it together in one binder and with that label, and that we have enough information to proceed with developing the funding strategy. And so, we lead out an implementation timeline for you to consider, and that begins in May and would culminate with perhaps, depending on the funding strategy that council chose, an election and a public decision on, in February. Part of our staff response also suggests that we may want to consider repurposing the mobility master plan, funding allocation, so that we could redirect staff time and develop the work plan that would be necessary to carry out this goal.
Okay, thank you. So, I'll, I'll let you start.
Do I have any questions?
Do you, do you, is it your sense that staff understood and the request and their response is clear? Okay.
So?
Yeah, and I would, I would concur. It's a very detailed plan. And just for everyone's reference, on December 12th of 2014, we had a presentation that had a big red line, balance needed for growth, 96 million, and this goal formed itself in my mind at that very moment, even though we were already kind of committed to the mobility master plan. It's just, and I think, so that was just, that was a big part of the motivation at that time. So, I, any questions for us or for staff about the goal? Nina?
Thank you. And I, I ask this not to be, to be, to get on the ball here is why I'm asking this. This is a goal, and we're talking about goals that we usually implement in 2016. And so, what are the other, if this isn't a goal, what else could it be, especially considering that it's, may begin work on it now before we even have a retreat? What else, what other mechanism could you use to get this done?
So, I want to comment one thing. There's another comment earlier tonight, I think maybe Trish made that comment as well. One of the things we've tried to do with goals is make it very clear. You'll note this year, these are 2015 goals because they're the year that we considered them and maybe adopted them. Their implementation could be this year, next year, or ongoing thereafter. So, I've tried to move us away from this idea that we adopt it now for implementation next year. And, and so, and I think that's very freedom. I think that allows this legislative and policymaking body to really address a wider range of issues and maybe even take bold action even sooner. And I would put this one in that class because of the very concurrency plan itself, as the goal says in there. Really, the funding part starts in 2015, and that's simply, that's, that's the simple answer. So, but you asked something else for them.
Well, that's kind, no, that's kind of what I was asking, but is there another mechanism that would facilitate this process that we could consider in lieu of a goal?
Well, I, I believe a council committee could take it up. I believe we could bring forward an agenda bill for the full council's consideration. There are other, other avenues for sure. I think, I want to speak on your part, Paul, or your part, Stacy, but I, I think the thought was that this was, rose to that criteria that Paul had laid out about what constitutes a goal and deserved the full council's attention. Plus, embedded in here, we are asking for permission really to set aside one goal. And, and I strongly believe because we have completed a lot of it, we just haven't packaged it up for you. And, and so, because we're asking to kind of table one goal so that we can get started on perhaps this goal, this was the right process, place to have that conversation. I want to clarify that the work that we do have underway right now and that we would continue to do in the month of May was work that we had planned to do in terms of beginning to prioritize some of our transportation projects. We have to do that routinely as part of our capital facilities plan and TIP development. And so, that's really the work that's underway right now. But because this goal was submitted, we've also begun having some conversations about the what-ifs and the timelines that would be necessary to implement on this schedule.
Tola, then Josh?
I would encourage staff to have some alternate timelines available in case council pushes back on a recommended timeline. If, if council chooses to investigate that direction, this is going to be a hard one to do in the retreat because I could see this, this line item taking number of hours. If you, if, if, if we want to give the city direction on a recommended timeline for this, there's a lot to it, and we haven't started digging into what that would look like. As, you know, having been on VIS for a number of years, I mean, these things are really, all that stuff is really super, super critical. So, I don't know how, how you're going to dig into this because honestly, I mean, it could be two or three hours just on this one item.
Okay, so noted. Josh?
So, a couple of things of...
I'm sorry?
So, a couple of things. I, I share the concern, you know, if there's talk about a ballot package, I'd rather do it right than do it fast. And one piece of information that I don't see in the response is where it talks about analyzing plausible funding strategies. I think we already have a lot of that information. I think, you know, Paul, you brought it up when we were talking about concurrency. The central area plan provided us with information about funding strategies and costs for the various types of projects in the central area. We also have the concurrency analysis that talks about funding strategies, various forms of taxes, districts, whatever, you know? And, and I think that, I don't remember if it came from Randy directly or who, but, you know, maybe include, I don't know, links to where we can find those. The documents themselves may be too big to attach to the response, but just to, to cross-pollinate that information with the response here because it talks about plausible funding strategies, and I know we've got that information on hand.
December 8th work session, 2014.
Okay. So, even, I don't know, a link to wherever you found that online or something in the response here so I can just click on it and pull it up because that may change some of the timeline analysis as well. So, that was one thing. The, the other aspect, let's see here, sorry, I just lost my place. Sorry, give me one sec. Oh, it was the tabling of the master mobility plan, mobility master plan, whatever, MMP. And I think that was a really important comment about tabling it because in the estimated cost for future years, there does not show a cost for restarting the MMP. And my understanding was that this supersedes the MMP in terms of timing, but it does not take the place. And so, we need to still understand as part of this that this is phase one of moving forward with that plan that the council adopted as a longer-term goal. And so, in the financial cost here, we're not losing sight of the fact that, that, that's not dropping off the table and being substituted. This is phase one.
Good catch.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Well, I think we've gone through them all. Thanks, everybody. Thank you, Emily, and everyone in staff who participated in reviewing, preparing responses, and, and those who presented tonight as well. I do have, not for discussion right now, but one of the general challenges I see is, is that the, when we vote on the goal, remember the policy, the, the approach will be, every goal will be judged on its own merits, up or down. So, that means we could pass zero, or it means we could pass even 11. But in doing so, we would do it with full knowledge of the best available information about what the costs per year would be in aggregate for those that we're voting for. I think the way the information is presented and summarized for some goals, that's very easy, and for others, that's pretty difficult to come up with a number or, or maybe a range. So, that would be one area I think I wanted, would ask us to, staff to work with us on how we can get to that. And so, that, just for example, if goal A, if, you know, if it's really clear, it's zero this year and 200,000 next year and zero the others, that's one thing. But some of them clearly, well, if you did this option, it would be this much. If you did this and this, it would be something else. And we just need to think about how we're going to assess those costs and account for them when we're considering voting for a goal. So, I, I don't have an answer for that, but I think that's a cross-the-table question we need to consider. So, thanks, everybody. We are adjourned.